Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in ten minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in five minutes. Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes.
Okay, if everybody wants to head to their seats, we'll get started in one minute. Okay, we will call the February 11th special meeting to order at four o'clock. I'm going to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and then we will get started. Okay, Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kent.
Here.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Santiago.
Here.
Mr. Dempsey. Mr. Johansson.
Here.
Mr. Brower.
Here. So we do have a quorum, but we have one member who is participating virtually, so I would need a motion to allow him to participate in proceedings and voting virtually.
Motion to allow Mr. Santiago to participate virtually.
Second the motion, Kent. Motion to allow by Vice Chair Reinhardt, second by Troy Kent. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And so Councilman Santiago has approved to participate and vote in the in the meeting virtually. Okay, let me just tell you real quick how the meeting will go because it's a little different, although we're doing more and more special meetings. This is a special meeting, so there's not public participation at the beginning of the meeting because we're only going to deal with the three items that are on the agenda. However, on each item, there will be public participation. So if you have signed up, your name will be called to speak. So for whichever items or all of them, if you want to speak, just please fill out a form, give it to Carissa Green, and during the public participation period, you will be called. We will start with an overview of what we're discussing by staff. There will probably be questions from council members, and then we will go to your comments before there's any debate at all. We want to hear from you first. So we'll begin with item one, Ordnance 2025-06, Division 8 Stormwater Management Amendments. And I believe Tad will be presenting that. And before we start, County Manager George Rectonwall.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And you laid it out perfectly for today. We do have the three items that are really... The first item being stormwater, a little bit more technical and what we'll go over. This is the work of Enrak and our county engineer. And then there'll be the other two items, which were more of the LID development. I will also say in your packet, and I didn't mean for any confusion, but in the previous discussion, there were seven items that were brought up and asked to get back, and we... Staff worked hard to get those items started. And basically, what you have also is an informational package that's in there for transparency, just to see the other work that's going on kind of in parallel to this. But it's not... There's no action or anything tonight on those items. That was really merely an update to see where we're at, answer some questions. But there's no action to do with those items. The items for action are on the agenda here tonight, one, two, and three. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tad, and he can get started on the stormwater portion of this. Go ahead.
Thank you, George. Tad Kaysbeer, county engineer. What I'm presenting tonight are the rules that were recommended by Enrak. Approximately a year ago, you tasked Enrak with taking a look at the county's stormwater ordinance and evaluating different options, trying to implement stiffer standards to avoid flooding on adjacent properties. This is the culmination of that. It is not the final product. Enrak discussed it quite a bit at the last meeting and previously. These are the first set of recommendations that would be coming to you. There will be some additional ones at a later date or later dates, based on the results of some of the basin studies that the county is working towards. We'll be able to test out certain things. Some of the things that you would want to see in terms of changing, say, a design storm or something along those lines, other different levels, different concepts, those will come a little bit later on in the process when we have a chance to go ahead and run those on some existing basins or using some of the models that are being created in the future. So this is the first step. These are the things that we thought made sense to bring to you. They were rather straightforward, certainly problems that we see in stormwater design throughout the county. But it is not the final product in any way, shape, or form. So before we jump into our rules, we thought it was important, and Enrak did this as well, to take a look at who regulates what overall. We certainly don't want to necessarily waste time duplicating efforts, and we certainly don't want to be contradicting higher levels and putting ourselves in a bad legal position. So federal government, they regulate basically water quality, the Clean Water Act and PDS permits. There's quite a few terms in a lot of these slides. Honestly, we're not going to cover most of those. They aren't important. Really what I want you to take away from this is that when the feds regulate stormwater, they're looking at water quality, making sure that the water that runs off is as clean as it possibly can be. The state takes a look at both water quality and attenuation. And attenuation is a very fancy term for flooding, water that runs off of your site. So attenuating that flooding would be a case where you would go ahead and capture or impound some of that water to mitigate the change in condition from the pre to the post. So the Water Management District is usually the group that implements it. In some cases, it's DEP. Water management basically works under the DEP's purview. So it could be either one, certain projects like power lines, utilities, things that are of a national consequence or statewide consequence, pardon me, are governed by DEP. Otherwise, it would be the Water Management District. Our rules, county's local rules, we regulate water quality, not to the same extent that the other two entities do, but we do regulate attenuation as well. And that's really what we're going to talk about today, is how do we go about doing that, and what are some of the recommendations we can do to improve and mitigate that flooding. So we're going to start off very basic. Remember from third grade, we had the water cycle. Rain falls from the sky. It either runs off the ground or infiltrates, percolates into the ground, and becomes groundwater, makes its way downstream to a water body, a stream, river, something along those lines, and ultimately makes its way back to the ocean. Basically, works in that cycle. You do also have other elements that are factored in there, evaporation, transpiration, evapotranspiration. When we're talking about storms, though, we're talking about a very short period of time, and we're talking about a very wet period. So evaporation, transpiration really don't have any effect during that short period of time that we're talking about. That would be something that would occur over a month. Certainly a bigger factor in states like Arizona, New Mexico, drier areas where evaporation really controls the water levels has an effect. In the humid areas of Florida, which is pretty much every area of Florida, it's not going to have nearly the same effect. And certainly in the short period of time that we're talking about, it doesn't have any measurable effect. So when it comes out of the sky, it does one of two things. It either percolates into the ground or runs off. And there are two factors that we take a look at when we compare that runoff. We're looking at how much water runs off and the volume of water that runs off. The state rule requires that the stormwater that runs off after you build something on your property can be no greater than what it was before it ran off, before you developed on your property. So we look at that in terms of how fast does it go, because that can have an effect. If the water gets downstream quicker, then it can cause flooding. Or if you send or allow more water downstream, it can clearly have flooding problems. So our rules tackle both of those particular situations. So how do we measure? How do we figure out if we're sending more or allowing more to get there quicker? We basically take a look at each particular site. We decide these three factors and put it through a model that tells us each of those different quantities. The size of the basin obviously is an important part of that aspect of it. You're taking a look. If it's a one-acre basin, you're not going to have very much runoff, certainly if you compare that to a hundred-acre basin. The runoff versus infiltration is also important. If you've got a lot of grass, if you've got a lot of undeveloped space, most of that water is going to percolate in. If your soil is sandy soil, that water is going to percolate in. If you've got organics or clay in your material in there, you're not going to have as much runoff. And then the amount of rain obviously has a huge effect in how much water runs off. So what you'll do is you'll take those different factors, put them into the model, you run it in the existing condition before you build something, the precondition. And then you would also model it again in the post-condition, changing the factors of your runoff based on the type of development that you're putting in, the amount of asphalt, the other types of things that you may put on your site. So determining the basin limits, figuring out what your basin is. Basically, it's all the water that falls on one side of a high point versus another. You can see in the top right, the map shows the basin line running along the ridge lines of a certain area and coming down to the low spot in the bottom right of the exhibit. So anything that falls inside that red will end up at the very bottom where the red and yellow intersect. We do this, we come up with that map, basically using contours, as you see in the bottom exhibit on the left-hand side. Take those high points, we work our way down the contour lines and figure out exactly what our basin is, and then we operate from there. So we get an area based on that. Now, there are two different types of basins that we deal with. The most common is an open basin. Basically, this means that that water, when it runs off in that basin, has a route to the ocean, has a surface water. So the east side, everything basically goes to the intercoastal or the ocean, one of the two. You have also closed basins, which means that that water may get impounded. There'd be a... It goes to a low spot and then doesn't have a route to get to a stream or a lake or something along those lines and ultimately make its way to the ocean. The Land Ridge is full of closed basins. That water goes to a low spot and then really doesn't have any way to get out other than percolation. That's important because it changes how we model certain aspects. Again, in the stormwater runoff versus infiltration. So what we're looking at with regard to this aspect, the amount of runoff, obviously, the type of ground cover is a big part of that. If you've got grass, if you've got trees, all those different things will hold that water at a greater rate than, say, an appervious surface. The slope of the ground...
Can you hold... Did you bring your own music?
We would have played it sooner.
Who... Somebody's phone is going off. If you could silence it, and please, if everybody would just silence their phones. Okay, thank you. Continue.
All right. So the surface cover, the type of the surface cover has a huge effect on whether or not it runs off or percolates into the ground. The slope of the ground obviously has a big effect. If you're in a mountainous area, and obviously you don't run into that here in Florida, you're going to have more water runoff. Doesn't matter how great the soil is. If the slope is very steep, water's going to move off there. Most of Florida's flat, so this has less of an effect on that aspect. The soil type, if it's a clay-type soil or something that doesn't allow water to move through it very quickly, most of that's going to run off. If you've got beach sand, that's going to allow more water to run through it. So you're going to have less runoff in those areas. And then you've got other aspects, voids and soils and saturation as well can have an effect. So this gets measured in a curve number. So this gets measured in a curve number when we go ahead and model it. And because, you know, it's not, a curve number is not a percentage, but it acts very similar to a percentage. So when you see a ninety-eight for asphalt sidewalk, road, parking, all those types of things, that basically means that ninety-eight percent, thereabouts, of that water will run off. Even in asphalt or concrete, you're going to have a certain amount of that water that percolates into that surface. There are always voids, there's space, even micro depressions, things like that, that will hold that water. You get into other surface types, dense forest, light forest, brush, those types of things. They all have different rates of runoff associated with them. You'll see four columns that identify the numbers, and those are associated with the soil types. As I mentioned before, the soil type has a large effect on whether or not the water runs off or gets held. And A soils on the left-hand side, those are the better draining soils. So that's where you get, again, the beach sand, the water moves through it rather quick. And so those are lower numbers, because it means less water runs off. D soils, on the other hand, clay, organics, types of things that create wetlands, those are on your right-hand side. And most of that water runs off of those areas overall. So water bodies, wetlands, those are basically going to be right around one hundred. Because water, when it hits water, doesn't absorb, it runs off. So that number is basically going to be one hundred. So we know what our basin size is, we know what our runoff percentage is. The next thing we've got to do is figure out what size storm to model, so we can compare our pre and our post. So on our open basin, again, that's the one that gets all the way to the ocean. You can see we generally use a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour frequency storm. That's, both the state and the county use that same size storm, which in Deland approximately is eight inches. Now, that size storm will change depending on where you are in the county. And New Smyrna Beach will have a different number than Ormond Beach will have a different number than Pearson or Delant. In a closed basin, you can see we either use a twenty-five, ninety-six hour storm, the state does, and then the county uses a hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm. Both of those equate to approximately about eleven inches in Delant. Again, slightly different in the other locations, but that's basically what you use for those. So now we take all of those different things, and we'd say, okay, how much water runs off in the precondition? That number, we both calculate for both a volume and a rate, and we set that. Then we go ahead and revise the model. We plug in curve numbers that are associated with the development. More asphalt, therefore your curve numbers are generally averaged out higher. And then rerun that model with that same set of storms. And the difference is what actually gets impounded. We're required to hold that on the site. It was previously groundwater, and now it's being converted to surface water by the development. So now we have to use some method, stormwater ponds being the most common, to hold that water on site and convert it back to groundwater, similar to what the pre-existing condition had. So that's how we design that system overall. We have to pick a type of system that's going to work appropriately for the area that we're in. So ponds are the most common. That's what everybody thinks about when you think about holding in your floodwaters, that type of thing. Whether we use wet ponds or dry ponds, it's pretty simple. If the water table is high, then you're going to use a wet pond. If the water table is low, you're going to use a dry pond. It's not any more complicated than that. You can, in certain situations, if the water table were low, and you wanted to have, you know, a fancy pond like they've got in the picture there with the fountain, you could go ahead and line your pond to hold that in there. But then you would lose the benefit of percolating, and your water would be held up, and you would have to design your pond quite a bit bigger. You have other methods. The other methods generally work out to be a little bit more expensive or less attractive for most home buyers or developers, so they generally haven't been using them to date. That doesn't mean they aren't good, and there are certainly things that we recommend as a part of the LID standards that are coming before you later today. So you've got underground storage, which is basically taking certain chambers, putting them underground. Because it's underground, you obviously have to have a low water table. It can't be high. In that case, you just couldn't use it. You can use swales, bio-swales, certain, something like that. And there are other methods that Ginger will cover a little bit later today. So the different types of design factors that we look at in terms of our stormwater attenuation system. As I mentioned, the water table is a large determining factor on which type of system you use. The amount of runoff that you've got to attenuate certainly is a big factor as well. The top right, you can see is an example of underground storage. So you can see that it's basically chambers that are put in underground, and to create volume, so that you can go ahead and store your stormwater in there. That said, the efficiency of that space versus a stormwater pond is not quite the same. Generally, when you dig a hole, it's pretty cheap. If you've got to dig the hole and put these chambers in, and backfill that material, and you don't get anywhere near the volume that you would from just digging the hole in the first place, it's usually not something that you see very often. There are only a few places in Volusia County that I've seen that have actually used them, and most of those situations are a case where the land value is worth the offset cost that it takes to put in the underground storage. So for example, when Stetson put in their Welcome Center, it was right there in the middle of campus. They had a limited amount of space, and so an underground storage system made a heck of a lot of sense in that particular location. The other factors that you take a look at, soil characteristics and types. Again, similar to the water table, if your soils are not great water, or great at percolating, then you're probably going to be stuck with more of a wet-style system. And then finally, your tailwater. Now, your tailwater is the area downstream from which your pond would drain. So if you are particularly on the east side, and you've got a canal next to you that your pre-water would have been draining to, you're going to drain your post-water to that same location. You need to know what the elevations are in that ditch or that canal, so that you can make sure that your system works appropriately. If the water table in the ditch sits higher than the discharge in your pond, your pond is not going to work. So you would have to raise your site. So those are all different factors that would get considered when we take a look at what type of system we would use. The most important aspect of, or the first most important aspect of designing your stormwater system is your seasonal high water table elevation. This is the elevation on which the water rises in the ground, if it's below ground, to a seasonal point on an annual basis. So during the wet season, where is the water table sitting in the soil that you're developing over? So you'd need to identify that elevation. So if it's below ground, you have a geotechnical engineer would come out. He would do borings in the location where you're going to do your stormwater pond. From that, he would take a look at the soil characteristics, first identify where the water is at that point in time. You go out and do borings during the dry season, your water table's going to be low. You do borings during the wet season, the line is going to be higher. But there are markers in the soil that tell you how often, or the points where water is sitting in there on a regular basis. So water changes the soil characteristics a little bit. And so when you see that change, you know, okay, water has been to this elevation on an annual basis or on a seasonal basis enough to make that change. So that would be how they would establish that seasonal high elevation. Now, if you're doing multiple borings, since you should in most cases, you would potentially average those, because it's not going to be exactly the same across the entire site. But if it's above ground, then your seasonal high is going to be set by generally a biologist, because you're usually going to have wetlands or surface waters at that location. And as we know, a lot of our water bodies fluctuate in terms of their elevation. And so what you'd be taking a look at in that case to establish that seasonal high would be different vegetation. Certain plants are obviously more resistant to water levels on a regular basis. That would be an indicator. You'd also potentially have moss lines, lichen lines, something along those lines. I'm not a biologist, so I'm probably massacring those terms. I apologize. But there would be indicators that would tell you where the water gets to on a fairly regular basis overall, so that they could, we could establish that seasonal high. Now, the seasonal high is important, because that actually is utilized as our design normal water level when we go into designing a stormwater pond, or whatever other system we were using for attenuation. So it sets the very first elevation in everything we do. So for example, on a wet pond, as we've got shown there on the right, you'll see a triangle with the N-W-L acronym next to it. That's the design normal water level. That's the water level that was basically established as a seasonal high for that area. You wouldn't want to use a lower elevation, because a good portion of the year, or a portion of the year, that water level's going to be higher than that. You'd rather use the highest point, the seasonal high, as opposed to anything below that, even though there are going to be good portions of the year where that water level may sit lower than that. So you'd establish that design normal water level. So that's the first thing we do when we go into the design of a development. When we run our model to figure out how much water would be impounded by the pond, and make sure that the system isn't sending more water, either by volume or rate, downstream than the precondition, we'll take the water that comes in from our site into that pond, and that water gets added to that elevation of the design normal water level. Okay, and at the highest point, because it will start discharging at some point through that discharge control structure, it will reach its peak elevation, or max stage is another way to say that. So it reaches that max stage in the stormwater pond. When you design your development, you'd want to know what that elevation is, because your infrastructure, your roads, your stormwater pipes, or pardon me, your stormwater inlets, you're going to want those to be above that elevation. There are certain times when water may be on the road, but you prefer, especially with a new development, that it's not designed with a standard storm, with water sitting on that road, if you can absolutely help it. So your max stage then would be the minimum elevation, or usually it'd have a little bit of space in there between that and your inlet elevation. And then from your inlet elevation, you'd set your center line of road elevation. And then per the Florida Building Code, your house has to be, or your finished floor elevation for any structure, home or business, needs to be at least twelve feet above that. And that's the highest point adjacent road. So all of that comes back to starting with that seasonal high elevation. If that seasonal high elevation is wrong, then everything else has a problem. The water level is higher in your pond, which means now it's on your road, because it's up in the inlets. And if it's off enough, it could be on yards before it gets to homes. Now, generally, when things have been built with the foot above the adjacent road, we haven't seen too much flooding in the development itself for those, which is good. We don't want to build any new homes, certainly, that are flooding. So that elevation sets the tone for everything else we do on our system overall. So that's important. Then the next part of the stormwater system is recovery. So we've had our storm, water's come in, we've impounded the amount that we're required to, so that we don't send in any more water downstream than we're allowed to, or any faster than we're allowed to. We need that system to get back to its original condition, that starting condition, as soon as possible. And if it doesn't, if it stays higher, then when that next storm comes in, and it's above that design normal water level, it doesn't have the volume in there to be able to store. And then we start getting that same condition as if the seasonal high was wrong. So recovery is an important part of the system as well. The ways that these systems recover for a wet pond, you have an orifice in your discharge control structure, which allows that water to release. And it goes into the downstream area that would drain to the ocean via canals or via rivers, however it gets there. Dry systems would just percolate into the soil. So you obviously have to have good soils conditions for dry ponds to work appropriately. If they don't, then you're going to have water in there for a longer period of time, and it may affect future storms, because you're not recovering back to the level that you need to. All right. So that's the surface runoff that's created by a storm. We also have groundwater. Now, groundwater is not something that is generally regulated. There's really not many ways to control it. Once it gets into the ground, it follows the ground elevation for the most part. There are different soils conditions that can cause it to be held up or slowed down. If you change a soil type, you go from a soil that is well-drained to something underneath it that would be like a clay layer, or something along those lines. It would act and confine that water above that elevation. And you would then have a situation where it's not following the groundwater elevation. But really, other than putting in confining layers, there's no good way to control where the groundwater goes. It's going to follow gravity, and it's going to go to those low spots. As you can see on here, the water table basically mimics the land until it comes to a situation where it peaks above and becomes either a lake stream, pond, something of that type. You do have, as I mentioned, confining layers. What this doesn't show is a case where you might have what we call a perched water condition, where you would have the confining bed actually come up and intersect the ground elevation, or close enough to it such that it basically cups an area and keeps that water from following the contours. And you'll see that in certain areas, especially in the Deland Ridge, certain areas that do not percolate, where the water is held up at a different rate than other locations. So that's another thing that we've got to deal with. But once the stormwater system attenuates that water, it basically becomes groundwater, and it follows these conditions. So I'm going to take a step back a little bit. We talked about how we calculate all these things. Mentioned closed basins, and they're a little bit different. They have a different sized storm. They also have a different issue than open basins. Open basins ultimately have a way to get to the ocean, and flooding by that regard is always controlled by ocean level for the most part, which generally stays pretty static. Whatever your opinions on sea level rise, that's a different issue. We just treat it as if it basically stays a similar level or close enough there. In a closed basin, the water goes to the bottom, and it sits there. Only way it has to recover, get lower, is by percolation. And that's a much slower process overall. So flooding is a much bigger problem in the closed basin areas, as we see with places like Miller Lake. It takes a long time for that amount of water to percolate out. In some cases, it may need help. So it is a real problem to address. So with regard to stormwater systems and developments, where do we see most of the problems? Problems that we need to fix? Storms are larger than the design standard. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that the system is going to fail just because the storm is larger. The standard practice, as I said, is to use a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm, an eight-inch storm. The amount of runoff is heavily dictated by the pre-construction soils conditions. If you had D-type soils, as you recall, that was the worst soil type. If you have D-type soils, you're going to get a lot of runoff, whether the site is developed or not. So your ponds are generally going to be smaller in those areas. Problem is, that's also those same areas where you're going to have most of your flooding. The water doesn't percolate into the ground. It better have a route to a stream, canal, ditch, something that allows that water to move. You also see problems with the seasonal high groundwater elevation. If the information utilized by the geotech or by the biologist is incorrect, or that number is wrong, because as we saw, it sets everything above it, if it's wrong, it'll really screw up site development. Soils conditions, there are a lot of assumptions made when a pond is designed, that the soils conditions are going to stay that way. But when a contractor gets in there and starts digging that hole and moving dirt around, it's very easy to change the soils conditions if they're not careful. Tailwater elevations. Mentioned before that the tailwater where your pond would be discharging to, if that's wrong, estimated wrong or changes, then that can have a problem. It can degrade the ability of your stormwater system to work appropriately. That's also tied in with your design for your discharge structure. If that's incorrect, you may have issues. You may allow water at a different rate than what it's allowed to be. You may have, it's usually based on a problem with one of the other factors, but that can be wrong as well. Royal Oaks not putting a weir in that they're supposed to put in. That's a discharge control structure. If that's not put in per the design, or if the design is wrong, obviously it doesn't work right. And then another factor that we have is the stormwater facilities, their location on a particular site. So when you have an existing site... So when you have an existing site and water is percolating in, it's percolating generally all across that site. Now, it may have multiple soils types in there, so you know, it may percolate at different rates across a site, but it percolates generally across that entire site. When you come in and convert that site to a constructed site, a developed site, you are changing the percolation pattern and you're now creating a large location if you have a single pond or multiple ponds. You're putting in spots where you are increasing where that water is located. If you are uphill of somebody, and almost everybody's uphill of somebody, and that pond is put at the low spot, which is where you generally want to put it because water likes to go downhill and haven't figured out any other way to do it. If you put your pond immediately adjacent to somebody else's property where that water had previously been percolating across their entire area and now you've put it right next to their property and it percolates there and that groundwater is going to get there much quicker and you can cause flooding there. You can also have situations like we had at the Publix Pond down on the south side of Deland here at Orange Camp. If the stormwater facility is at an elevation difference that's quite a bit higher than the adjacent site, if that structure is not properly set up, you can have a situation where either water overtops and takes out a side or water percolates through and can actually blow out that side as well. So those are all things that we do not specifically regulate at this point in time in the rules. One of the factors that obviously is of a large concern to most people is the rainfall. And this is the last part of most of the equations with regard to stormwater. And I've got both the Deland and the Daytona rainfall. We, Ben had previously talked about the Deland rainfall in several of his presentations, but I went ahead and pulled the Daytona as well just to give the east side some representation in this regard. But what you see over the last 24 years is a pattern where generally between 2001 and 2005, you have high amounts of rainfall. You've got the one year in 2003 where it actually dips a little bit below average, but those other four years are quite a bit above average. And those were the hurricanes and other rain events in that period. Then what you have between 2006 and 2016 is actually a relatively dry period for this area. All but one year is under the average. And that one year that was above average was Tropical Storm Fay. And that had a big event that dropped a lot of water during that time period. What we see in the last seven years is that the water table or that the rain amounts are generally back to an increasing level. You can see it's 60 and then jumps all the way up to 70.2. And actually, that number is a little bit below because I didn't get the last couple of weeks of 2024 in there, but does factor in Milton and that aspect. But you see of that group of seven years that we've only got two years that are below our average and both of those are pretty dang close to average. So why is that important? Well, one of the things we talk about with regard to existing development adjacent to these properties and what we see is that with this amount of rainfall over this period of time, the ground doesn't have time for that seasonal high elevation to percolate back in. So we get a rain amount like we had, for example, in 2004, 2005. We get the hurricanes in that timeframe. We've got a lot of rain. But then that's followed by 2006 where we had the lowest amount of rain during that overall period. When you take a look at aerials for most of these sites, most of the county, what you see is that those high water tables that occurred right after those storms, it drops pretty dang quick and it gets down there very fast. Now, that's not to say that rainfall is the only problem we've got with this, but what we are seeing because of the way the rainfall is operating in these last seven years with a general increase as we go along, that the ground does not have time to recover. And it needs to. We need the ground to recover for the new systems to work. And because it doesn't recover, what you have is a situation where that seasonal high may actually continually increase. It takes time for water to make those indicators in soil to indicate a seasonal high. And what we're seeing is over these last seven years, that water table just keeps going up. So that seasonal high, even though the geotech is taking the best available information, it may not represent what's going to be the seasonal high next year or the year after that. And we are looking at these designs as from here on out. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that this elevation may keep changing. And since we've got a design for the future, that's one of the things that EnRAC recommends is making a change to that aspect. As I said, we've got the Daytona rainfall. It follows a fairly similar pattern. Obviously Tropical Storm Fay was not as big a deal to them, but you still see that same period, that 2001 to 2005, all above. It didn't even have the dip that Deland had. And then you've got that period up to about 2017, 2018 where generally everything is below average with the exception of 2014. And then you've got a period there where it bounces around, but you've got the two years below average and then everything else is above average. It doesn't have that general same trend that Deland does in the upward cycle, but it is a more prominent issue for Deland because as I mentioned, most of Deland, or not most of Deland, but most of your closed basins are found in the Deland, Orange City, DeBury area on the Deland Ridge. So groundwater elevations are going to play a much larger factor in your stormwater design in those closed basins than, say it well, in the open basins. So recommendations from EnRAC. We just talked about the seasonal high. One of the things that we recommend in the ordinance is that there'd be a safety factor placed on the seasonal high table elevation. So the geotech and biologists would go out there and they'd do their standard practice. They'd identify the different markers or vegetative types, lichen lines, they'd go ahead and set that seasonal high the same way they always would. Then after that, they would have to place a six-inch safety factor above that. Basically what that would do then is basically when we go back to the stormwater pond design, that seasonal high elevation now has an extra six-inch buffer that it didn't have before and it creates additional volume in that stormwater pond in that design. One of the other things we haven't regulated as it relates to seasonal high is the number of pond borings. We recommend that there be two pond borings per acre. Right now, we leave it up to the geotechnical engineer or the design engineer to make that call. The two per acre is based on the DOT's recommendations. That's what they use for their ponds. And as far as I'm aware, they're the largest pond builder in the state of Florida. And if it works for them, it certainly works for us and we certainly would recommend being conservative in that area. Pond borings are not that expensive. It's pretty easy to do and it'll give the geotechnical engineer as much information as possible to be able to evaluate and make good recommendations. There's also an issue with curve numbers. Recall from that table, we talked about A and D soils, A, B, C, D soils. There are certain soils types that are actually combinations of two, an A slash D soil or a B slash D soil. I won't get into why that is. It's truly not that important, but we don't want to allow the site design to be too aggressive and utilize, if they use that A soil in their precondition, it means their curve number is lower. That means less water runs off and therefore your pond is smaller. Or pardon me, if you use the higher number. If you use the lower number, that's the more conservative approach and means that the pond is going to be as big as it possibly should be. And we'd thought that, we'd say that they have to use the more conservative number unless they can get a geotechnical engineer to verify that the soils conditions are truly aligned with the D-type soils. Tailwater elevation. Right now, we allow the engineer for the development to set that tailwater elevation and he'll go out and most of the time it's as simple as finding a downstream structure, whether it's a head wall and a culvert or a drainage structure or something along those lines, a hard surface. You'll see a stain line where the water gets to that elevation on a fairly regular basis and they'll basically use that elevation. They'll mark that and then when the surveyor comes in to survey the project, he would note that elevation and then off they go. Now, there can be quite a bit of play in that. What we're recommending is that the staff for the county be involved with setting that elevation when it's initially identified instead of waiting until after they've submitted their calculations, performed all that, send it over to us for review and in which case it's pretty well locked in and there isn't much, well, there's not a whole lot of arguing room on the county staff's side of things to be able to push for something potentially a little bit higher. So having that discussion beforehand actually helps the design engineer know what he's got in terms of his design parameters upfront and can help them to not waste their time arguing with as about those types of things. And then stormwater facility pond locations on the site. Requiring that the ponds be located interior to the site. If they are adjacent to a piece of property right on that property line, if there's an elevation difference, that they would have to go ahead and put in something that makes sure that the side does not blow out, whether it's a clay core or liner, something along those lines to make sure water isn't moving through that surface downstream too quickly or in addition to that, putting in a weir that allows for when it does reach emergency situations that it's got a controlled surface so that it's not running over the top and blowing out a side overall. So basically gone through and highlighted what the different situations are, but as we discussed, the seasonal high basically sets everything for your pond, wet or dry or any of that type of thing. The language is included in here. If you really want to listen to the sound of my voice, I can read each one of these individually, but I'm assuming that you've looked at all of these. The one thing I did want to highlight, we didn't cover it too much elsewhere. This is an example of what we're talking about with regard to the location of a stormwater pond. This is State Road 17 or US 17, north of, it's split from 1792. So you've got the shopping center that the county just bought for the Department of Elections. And this is the Hampton Inn on the south side. And on that west side of the yellow property, that's the stormwater pond. And if you're familiar with this area, that's Lake Gerty to the left. And the elevation change between the road on the east side and Lake Gerty on the west side is about 40 feet in that location. So that, most of that occurs through this particular property. So the west side is your low spot. So you can see that would make the most sense for putting your stormwater pond at that particular location. Now, placing your pond in another location on the site would be extremely tough to do and would not necessarily produce the best results overall. In this design, what was done was on that western side, there was a clay core put in in that section so the water does not move via groundwater from the east side of the line to the west side of that western line. It has to go around and that slows it back down to closer approximate the pre-construction condition at this location. It also has an emergency overflow that if it got to a point where it was getting too much water and it was going to overtop, instead of allowing it to just blow out a side similar to the public pond, it would be able to go over that concrete structure and go downstream without losing the capacity and capability of this particular pond. Here's a quick shot of the elevations such you can see what we're talking about with regard to those elevation changes in that location. So those are the recommendations of EnRAC at this point in time. They may have some speakers that would like to reiterate that, but did want to make that clear that there are other things that are coming. But these all seem like intelligent things to tackle that can be put into place right now and can have a real tangible result.
Thank you. Questions from council for Tad, Troy Kent?
Yeah, Mr. Caspier, just one thing you said early on, and please, if I wrote any of this down wrong, correct me.
Sure.
State law and our rules don't allow us to have more water come off of someone's property with buildings compared to no buildings.
Correct.
Okay. So my question is, what we didn't talk about, what about when people fill in and destroy the wetland that was on that property? Or they pay into a mitigation bank? Like that piece, you know, I didn't hear that discussed by staff? And that is a huge hanging question for me is what about, you know, you think, well, you know, you allow that with one property, but when that's your rule and you allow every property to pay into a wetland mitigation bank and there's wetlands on these properties and people just build on them, there has to be some accounting for the water for that first comment of state law and our rules don't allow us to have more water come off of your property with building than without a building. Who's making sure those checks and balances are working? Because I think we have two things going on here. You know, we have record rainfalls over the past 20 years and we have public testimony from dozens of people that come up here and say, I've lived here 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 60 years, you fill in the number, it's never done this before and there's a new development right next door. Do we have any answer as far as what about when those wetlands are filled in or the wetland mitigation bank is paid into? Because it just for me, from, you know, I don't possess an engineering degree nor am I a land use attorney, but to me, that is problematic.
The, when wetlands are impacted, when they're a part of a development, just like any other aspect of that piece of property, their runoff rate pre-construction is compared to the post and it still has to meet that. Now, what you see, like I said, when I had the curve numbers up there, a wetland, a water body, they have high runoff rates. When the water hits existing water, it runs off. It has nothing to soak into. Can't soak into other water. So a lot of times when you're taking a look at your stormwater impact, when you're running your stormwater model, a wetland is actually not going to create much in terms of a requirement to hold that water on site. Now, does certainly have a negative impact to the amount of water that can be stored in that area and that is an important aspect of it. There's no one set answer because if it's part of a closed basin, it could be a different answer than an open basin or different other site conditions can occur to it. What I will say to your point is that yes, that is a bad thing to do, but the rules currently allow for that to occur. And if I were going to recommend a change, it would certainly need to be studied a little bit along the lines of it's on a case-by-case basis because not all, just like any soils type, not every wetland is the same either.
I publicly want to thank you because I was not expecting to hear you say that last part about you do believe that that's a bad thing to do because when I was listening to you, you know, my thought was, and I'm, I hear you and I'm with you with the, you know, it's already wet, how much can it handle right there? But when you allow that rule and it happens everywhere in an area, it has to compound the problem and just make things worse for anybody that's lower. And anybody that's lower is lower because maybe they've been there for 40 years and that was the elevation level they were, they were told was going to be okay and now all of a sudden it's not okay. Thank you for your comment.
Tad, thank you for the explanation on the curve. But kind of going back to that on page five, and you mentioned that you'd talk about the six-inch rule, a safety rule. Tell me what that does. Is it requiring more fill? How does it help? Is it six-inch increase of the elevation of fill around a pond or what is a six-inch rule?
Okay. So when you add the six inches, as I mentioned before, you're looking to impound a volume as well as a rate, but let's, volume is the easier one to understand. So you've got a certain amount of water you know you've got to hold back based on the change that you've made to the site. And that volume, keeping things as simple as possible, gets put into your pond and your pond bottom or the starting elevation of your pond is set by that seasonal high. So. So, when you add that six inches, then basically what that does is that raises the bottom of your pond, on a dry pond, six inches. And so, you would have a greater separation from the bottom of your pond to that water table. The standard rule is two feet from the bottom of your dry pond to your seasonal high elevation. That way, there's room for that water to percolate. If that water table is too high compared to your bottom, it's not going to percolate, it's not going to recover, and therefore, your system's not generally going to work very well. Adding the extra half foot in there, now basically making that two and a half foot, will have a potential increase, because, you know, as you see there, once you change your seasonal high, you change your bottom of your pond, now you have that volume, the volume stays the same, so your top of bank has to go up as well. So, it can have that effect of pushing everything generally six inches higher. Now, I say that, but that actually gets mitigated to a certain extent, especially the larger the site that you have coming to each particular pond. So, because Florida is relatively flat, you have, you know, quite a bit of room for rise and fall. What it would generally do is flatten out some of those slopes that you would have in your road network. Obviously, everything still has to work to be able to drain for water to move and get over the surfaces of the road, through the pipe system, and down into your pond. But you can shallow those up, and you would minimize the amount of fill that this would require. Now, some people have said that adding six inches to the height would make things worse. Actually, in point of fact, once you get above the water table, it doesn't matter how high your site is, you're not going to increase the level of water, because the water table is not affected. Most developers, when they develop their site, they're going to develop from property line to property line. They don't usually buy more property than they need, and especially residential site, they're going to utilize every piece of that property that they can to get the units they can. They're in the business to make money, so units equal money. What they're comparing that to is the cost of fill, to figure out what number of units they can get versus what the cost of those units are. And in a case like this, you add that six inches, again, it's going to be above the water table. You're already coming above ground for most of these in the first place. And as such, you know, coming six inches above the water table, or three feet above the water table, the water table is not changing any further. Now, if you've got a situation where the development is downstream of somebody, okay, you're at a lower elevation to start with your, than your, in the precondition versus the post-condition, then usually the design is such that you want to route that water around your site, mimicking the historic condition, because there's going to be somebody generally downstream of you. So, you would still, you are always required to have any of that upstream water coming to you. You either take it into your site, add it to your stormwater pond, and attenuate it, just like you do with anything that you create, or you route it around your site, just the same way as if your site was not developed at all. So, we take a look at those aspects, and we make sure that if somebody is higher, and their water is coming to the site, that they are, that water is addressed, that it's not allowed to pond up on the upstream property any more than it does in the historic condition.
Okay, so, you're, you're elevating the bottom of the pond, which means it's a corresponding elevation in the top. Does it have any effect on the diameter, on the size of the pond? Does it increase volume?
Well, I mean, you can get your volume basically one of two ways. You go deeper, you can go wider. And most developers, if you go wider, you're going to start losing units. So, you're usually going to go up to keep your unit count. And again, what you'll do is you'll just flatten out your site as much as possible, so you're not currently putting six inches across your entire site, unless it's a really small site, so.
Okay. Couple other quick questions, same page six, it talks about an upland buffer, but it says where feasible? If it's not, we're trying to prevent future flooding. If it's not feasible, why is it acceptable? If it's not feasible to have an upland buffer?
You got me at a disadvantage. Which one in particular are you looking at?
On one dash six, page one-six, about three-quarters of the way down. Yeah, is that six? I can't tell from this.
Yeah, it didn't, didn't make it onto the slide, unfortunately.
Okay.
Do you have a line number?
It just, line one sixteen.
Okay, gotcha, found it, sorry. Now, I would note, that's part of the existing rule, and so honestly, I don't, don't know what the rest of that portion of the rule specifically says. The recommendations from EnRAC are the underlying portions. Those are the only portions that were added, well, in this case, all of them were added, but added to the existing rule. So, we can certainly take that to EnRAC and ask them to take a look at that particular wording.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. On, on the next page, emergency spillways. Where, where does the water go? The, let me ask you a couple of questions you can deal with. Right now, the law is that you can't have more water leave your property than left it before it was developed. So, an emergency spillway, you're putting water, I guess, to the surrounding property? Or is it going back to this property?
To the adjacent downstream property, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have permission from that property owner to do that? And how do we know that we're not dumping more water on that surrounding property that went naturally? Is it metered, is it measured, and who, who oversees that?
Sure. The, the way the stormwater rules are implemented, both at the state and county levels, are that we take a presumptive storm, in this case, for an open basin, the twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm, or a closed basin, either the hundred-year, twenty-four-hour for us, the twenty-five, ninety-six for the state. But you take that presumptive storm and say, okay, if your development meets the pre-post rate and volume for this, it's assumed that you are meeting the state overall rule. That's what the current rule says. And it doesn't speak to any aspects where you have an event like Milton or something along those lines that goes well above that aspect. So, that is one of the things that we will be evaluating as a part of EnRAC's review of the basin studies that are going to be performed. We are going to take a look at, including storms like Milton on the west side, or Ian on the east side, to, for the particular basins in those areas, and see what the effects of those storms are to come back and recommend potentially changing that presumptive standard of the twenty-five, twenty-four hour, or the twenty-five, ninety-six. So, as it relates to the emergency overflow in this case, what we're looking at, and the reason it's recommended, is that in the Publix Pond, there was no emergency overflow structure. So, it gets to a point where it overtops. I mean, the pond is only designed to a certain size, and, you know, I'd love to say that you're going to build your ponds big enough that no superstorm ever is ever going to exceed it. There's always the possibility that something will happen, and it will exceed it. And in that case, if you don't have a emergency overflow structure in place, then you have that risk of blowing out that side. Now, the problem with blowing out that side is not only do you, you're no longer impounding the water that that pond would have held, but you're also taking all the fill that's blown out, and all of that now is occupying volume that stormwater could have held. It's acknowledging that there, yes, should the design storms be considered to be changed? Yes, that's certainly something that, that will be evaluated. But in those emergency situations, if you didn't have the overflow, the pond would potentially blow out, and then you don't get any storage, because all the water that was in the pond just moves downstream.
Okay. I understand, but, but so now, but you've just identified two problems. One, if, if there is no emergency spillway, we saw what happened on Arch Camp Road. That thing collapsed, it flooded the houses across the street and the shopping center. It was horrible, it was expensive. So, we have to have one, but then we have the problem of how much water can spill over without doing the same thing? If the law says that you can't send more water off your property than, than left before development, we're not, nobody looks at that. It's not metered, it's not policed, we don't know. And we, so what we see is developments before the storm, emptying their pond, retention ponds, so that their neighborhood doesn't flood, and they're emptying it into the neighbors next door. And then, during the storm, after the storm, there's more water that there, the spillway is, is sending. So, it's really not fair to the surrounding communities, neighborhoods, that are taking all the stormwater from, from this spillway. I, I, I don't know how, how you deal with that, how you, how it's measured, but there ha, there should be some limit to how much water a development can dump on, on the neighboring property.
The tough part with it is, once something is constructed, it's hard to improve it, to increase its size. I mean, you're usually already maximizing the size of the property. So, once it's set, you're pretty much stuck with it. So, that's exactly right. We have to figure out what the standard is that we're going to go ahead and hold to. One of the things that expected to be an issue was in regard to the design storm versus raising the seasonal high by six inches. And changing your design storm, it's, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, you're going with a bigger storm, you're, you're comparing your pre-post, and off you go. But when you get into certain situations, so if you've got a site where you've got bad soils conditions in the precondition, so a lot of water runs off, doesn't percolate in the first place, and goes downhill. When you come in to build on that, your pond is not going to be very big in the first place. And just because you use a bigger design storm, if most of that water still runs off, if seventy-five percent of it runs off in the precondition, and after you modify your site, and it's only eighty to eighty-five percent running off, that's not a very big pond. So, you're still going to have a large amount of runoff. If you add the six inches to the stormwater pond, that's there the whole time. It's going to create more volume, even in those bad soil conditions, so that we are in those areas, again, those are the most flood-prone, those are the ones that have the most problems, where the soils are the worst. It would create that volume that changing the design storm would not.
Okay. I still think that we, we have to.
And I'm not saying that considering a new design storm is not appropriate. That's not what I'm trying to, to say at all. I'm just saying, with regard to the seasonal high, that's an easy one to do. It addresses several different problems, not just those situations. A lot of our pond failures are because the seasonal high elevation is wrong. Venetian Bay is a prime example. The seasonal high is estimated wrong in there, and if it's wrong, your whole development is toast, because all the other elevations that are set on that, and there's no fixing it. Lowering the water table in an area like Venetian Bay is not a reasonable option in any way, shape, or form. But that's about the only thing that you can do, because you're not going to raise everything in there otherwise.
Right. So, and it, I, I guess, I don't want to get in debate, but I, I will, I'll come back to this, because I think it's something that we, I don't know if EnRAC looks at it, or we do, because everybody has private property rights. The, the developer had a right to build, but they don't have the, the right to flood the neighbors around them because of an emergency spillway. And, and it's happening. You just, last question, you just mentioned it on tailwater. I'm going to take that to Venetian Bay that you just mentioned, because I, I was just there. I taught, I met with a developer, I met with homeowner associations, and my first question was, what are you going to develop next? And he said, nothing, because we don't know where to put the water. The problem, they say, was tailwater, that the places that they put the water is in a canal that goes to Spruce Creek, and during a storm, Spruce Creek is so much higher, it's backflowing into Venetian Bay. Their emergency spillway is on the east side, which is open land, and in a storm, that's already saturated, and it's high. And so, now that's spilling into the, it's backflowing into the community, and they, they had major flooding all, so I don't know what we can do about that. They, they attribute it to all that fallow land to the, to the east of Venetian Bay, has so much development around the edges, it's all displaced that water to the land next to them, so, so there is no place for the emergency spillway to go. How do we deal with that as development happens around an existing development to, to know that their displaced water is not coming into Venetian Bay or wherever? I don't have any easy questions.
Most of those situations where you're talking about displaced water, actually related quite a bit to Mr. Kent's question with regard to impacting wetlands. If you're building above the wetland line, your wetland line is generally your indicator of your seasonal high, which, when you think about it, would make sense. The water seasonally gets there, so the soils and the, the plants become wet, basically, types of soils and plants. And so, you know, if you're not building in those wetlands, you're generally not having that same effect. Now, you do have floodplains in those extreme situations that go above that in those non-seasonal times, but taking a look at where the floodplain elevation in is, and making sure that any of the building is generally above that, or at worst, mitigating or offsetting any of the impacts created by flooding, or putting development into the floodplain, is about the only way to approach that. The problem we've got is the areas that have already done so, and were constructed prior to any of the rules that we have now, those impacts have occurred, and there's really no resolving that, except maybe on a case-by-case basis, and if it's a small enough development, you could do something. But it's not something that most HOAs are ever going to be equipped to handle, or even commercial property owners. It's going to need to be something at a larger scale.
Do you know if, if Venetian Bay was developed with modern stormwater management?
Supposed to be.
Practices?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilman Robbins?
Thank you, Chair. Tad, thank you for your presentation. I'm actually, my questions are going to be for Clay. Clay's on the growth management end, just for the public, and also to oversee code enforcement, and is able to testify to any enforcement actions. Mr. Irvin? Can you describe for us, or tell us the difference between wetlands and wetland buffers?
Yes, sir. Wetlands are based on the soils, plant species, et cetera. The buffer is a buffer that's established by either the state or local governments to basically give separation between development areas and the wetland areas, and also to provide for opportunities for transitional species and those types of things to occur.
In Volusia County, in unincorporated, what do we do? To what measures do we go to, to protect the wetlands?
Well, you have a county-wide, a minimum twenty-five-foot wide buffer around all wetlands. That's generally consistent with St. John's River Water Management District. They do allow for averaging of the buffer. We do not allow averaging of the buff, averaging of the buffer. In the areas that are designated for natural resource management areas, the NORMA, or our environmental corridor overlay, we are looking at fifty-foot buffers, because those are areas of higher quality in regards to habitat.
Is it standard practice in Volusia County? I've been here four years now, and we've had a handful of developments come in front of us, not many, and not to any real numbers. Is it standard practice? Because I haven't seen one that we fill in wetlands?
We follow a, a, a set of rules and regulations that focus on avoidance and minimization. So, the number-one thing that when a person seeking to develop a piece of land, we ask them to delineate the wetlands, identify the buffer, and do the best to stay out of it. We understand that if you have to cross it for a road, otherwise you're not getting access, we have to have the minimum intrusion possible.
Sure.
But if someone comes in and says, "I need to fill in this wetland so I can get three more lots," we're not going to allow that, because again, they're not trying to avoid, they're not trying to minimize the impacts. And so, that is our primary focus. When we do see developments that need to cut into a buffer, we may allow that if it's showing that it's the only way for them to have reasonable use of the property. At the heart of it, we cannot use wetlands to take people's property, so we have to give them reasonable use. And I believe that Mr. Sorio provided you all an idea of what quote-unquote reasonable use is. Our number-one goal is not to allow for impacts in wetlands or wetland buffers, and we work with the state in regards to that. And we work with the state in regards to that. As you're aware, the state is the one who has definition of wetlands, who are the ones that have the requirements for the uniformed method for assessing mitigation. So many of that, many of those items are worked out either with DEP or St. John's River Water Management District.
And, and thank you Clay, because in the, in the instances where we do have, uh, developments come in front of us, you know, you'll see Cobb and Cole and any of the land use attorneys say, "Hey, we, don't make it a point. Hey, we avoided this, we didn't, we didn't touch this." I just wanted the public to also hear that, that we do have some standards, uh, that are in line with the state and some that are above and beyond, and it is not a common practice. I have not seen it, uh, to allow these wetlands to be filled in. You know, I can, Clay, is it common? Do we see encroachments in, in buffers, uh, more than, uh, wetlands themselves, would you say, or any?
I, I would say that what you're seeing is we do see more impacts into buffers because those are again, not necessarily the primary function of, or primary focus of what we're trying to protect. The buffer is still important. It's something that we don't allow for impacts to be of, just at any point in time. Again, we're trying to work with the landowners so that they can reshape how their development proposal will be so it avoids all of that.
Sure.
And if they cannot avoid it, in other words, a- and I'll give you a real world example. We have a gentleman who owns five acres of land over by, off of Spruce Creek. The entire frontage of his property is a designated wetland. And so he could not get access to the, the upland portion unless he got a driveway through there. He got a permit through DEP. Once DEP agreed with the, that, we were able to work with him to have the minimal impacts on the wetlands possible.
And lastly Clay, um, when it comes to the mitigation aspect of this, I, I haven't seen it. I, I could have missed it. I haven't seen it in my tenure here. But how common is it, uh, for people at our level to, to buy into these mitigation banks? Is that something that it can even be answered?
Yeah, I'll say for-
Because I know it's very expensive.
For the county's road construction, because we do hit wetlands many. For example, Dunn Avenue, putting that bridge in over the Timoka River, we're going to be impacting those wetlands associated with that. No option, really to that effect, uh, simply because even shading the wetland counts.
How about on a residential level for like a, a single lot person or somebody that maybe is developing land? We, do we see instances where they have to buy, is it common?
It, it depends on the, the, the level of what's going on and what's required by the state.
Okay.
Uh, DEP and St. John's River Water Management District. Remember, they're the ones who authorize and permit the water, uh, the wetland mitigation banks to begin with. And they see that what they're doing there is taking large chunks of land in critical locations, being able to preserve both lands and wetlands, and come in and provide for a total ecosystem management system through there. So they try to, again, if it's a situation where there's exhausted mitigation, maybe have to utilize that and the combination is on site.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Yeah, I don't know who's next in line, but if you could put me in the queue?
Okay. Jake Johansson was next, and he just deferred to, uh, Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr., thank you Jake. My question is for Clay, and I want to follow up and make sure I, you explained it. If I understand, as it pertains to the wetlands and we administer over, uh, uh, wetland-
David.
Yes?
Um, we're, we're having a really hard time hearing you. It's, it's chopped up. I don't know, can you turn off your sound on your end? Is there anything else that would help?
How about now? I turned off the video.
That's better, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I just want to follow up on the wetland, um, point. If I understood your explanation, it sounds like we're limited by state law. And it sounds like you are administering it to the most toughest capability we can by minimizing on when you give the ability to, to impact the wetlands. Is, is that a safe statement for me?
I'll, I'll let, uh, Mr. Sorio address the, the legal aspects of it. All I can state is that, eh, eh, in our code and in our adopted comprehensive plan, our stated goals are avoidance and minimization. And it's basically acknowledging that private property owners will have wetlands on site. In order to not be accused of a taking, we allow for them to develop their property in a manner that avoids the wetland as the number one priority. And if that cannot be avoided in order to get the minimal amount of impacts to allow for reasonable use of the property, we will allow for some minimal impacts. Is the best way to describe it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sorio, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So, to respond to Mr. Santiago's question on state preemption. The answer is always-
The answer is always, it's called-
So, the state preempts local governments-
Local governments-
Can, can you hold up one second? Again, we're having problem hearing in here. I don't know how David hears with, without turning off the, uh-
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Can you just mute your mic, uh, Councilman Santiago? Alright, try it again.
Okay, so, uh, the state preemptes in terms of wetlands in three aspects, um, which we, we've kind of hinted at and gone over. The first one is the definition of wetlands. The state has the exclusive, basically sets the definition. And so we can't be, uh, we can't have a different definition even if we want to be more restrictive. The second is the delineation of wetlands. The, the state and through its process sets where that wetland is. The third is, and so, what that doesn't say is it doesn't say, uh, local governments, you are prohibited from regulating wetlands or you are prohibited from saying, "Don't touch that wetland." That is up to the local government, you know, to accommodate, uh, to both preserve and protect wetlands, but still accommodate the reasonable use of prop, uh, of property. But if, uh, wetlands within the jurisdictional, um, uh, purview of the state are allowed to be impacted, then the state preempts local governments in one other aspect, and that is the amount of mitigation. So, uh, and also, uh, any mitigation, uh, regulations that are in conflict with the environmental resource permit or the permit from the Water Management District. So, you know, if a wetland impact is allowed within jurisdictional wetlands, one, we can't say that that is not a wetland and we can't say that the wetland line is different. Uh, we also cannot say that your mitigation for the impact of that wetland is anything other than what the state says in its permit. So if the state kind of allows a mitigation through an avenue that we don't like, um, the mitigate, it's, it basically, we have, we are, uh, preempted by the state permit. So, you know, that's kind of a, um, a shorthand way of saying, if the state acts and it says it's going to do something in terms of wetlands and wetland impacts, we have to abide by the state action.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. A few questions for, I guess, Tad would do, sorry. It seems like we've been concentrating on development. So, two questions. One, one is, if, if I have three adjacent fifty-acre properties in, on incorporated and, and the, the, the person owns the middle fifty acres, sells it to a developer and, and, and the developer wants to build X amount of houses and, and we improve it and, and it's, it's, uh, very, um, very above board, no zoning, no, no variances, no nothing. And, and as the, as the, as the topography is now, it, it goes from east to west, high to low. So, so that middle property, um, is, is just a, a go-through for water. The, the high property dumps into the middle and, and sits in the lower property of which is probably wetlands, right? So, uh, when that developer in the middle, um, wants to build, how does he allow that water to get from property A to property C? And, and is property C gonna see more?
Okay. I think I understand exactly what you're asking. So, if he goes in there and changes the flow pattern, which, if he builds something, he's going to change that flow pattern. He's got really two choices. He can go ahead and route that water around. So the water that came from the upstream property, I don't remember if that was A or C, but A, I think it was.
Upstream.
Yeah, so, comes from A onto his property, he's got to be able to route that around, uh, to the downstream property. So he would potentially put in, uh, some type of ditch or provide some type of grading around the perimeter of his property most of the time. Sometimes they'll go ahead and pipe it. But either way, they would route that water through. The other alternative is they can go ahead and collect that water and bring it into their stormwater system and do that. Most of the time, that's not something they would choose to do because now they have to increase, it's counted as dirty water by mixing with the development's water and therefore, uh, changes their pond size for that fact overall. But, in no si- either situation, they are not allowed to send more water downstream than before. So, they have to accept A and let's say that's, uh, ten cubic feet per second or a hundred cubic yards. That's not reasonable, but let's say that's what they receive. But they're only sending half of that from their property to the downstream property, property C. Well, they're not going to be able to send all of that water from A down to C. They're still stuck with that half amount and they've got to meet that. So they would collect that and, uh, either they bring it into their stormwater system or they would put in swales or there's some type of impoundment that keeps it separate from their water and, uh, uh, the system will be designed such that it doesn't overflow. Again, the big issue becomes the storm size that you're, you're running.
Right.
If you're using what's in our code and you're using what's in the Water Management District code, then it's presumed that you've met the rule. And obviously, that's something that needs to be evaluated.
Right, alright. And, and so that covers the development piece. But development isn't the only thing that, that we need to run around. We have, we have roads, we have parks, we have other, other stuff. There's, uh, uh, there's roads and bridges and, and FDOT and, and FDOT and, and the county and everybody else, the cities. Do, do they have to comply if they build a road-
Yes, sir.
In the middle of, of-
Yep, if we come in and we were to split, uh, B and, uh, one side is high and the other side is low-
Private roads that are doing that now, right?
Right.
Yeah.
If, uh, we do that, then, uh, just like the other situation, we put something on, uh, the outside of the road. It collects that water, brings it to, uh, usually a, a cross-drain pipe that goes from the upstream side of the road to the downstream side of the road. And generally, depending on how, uh, that water is coming through that area, it would be spread back out and then sent downstream. A good example of that would be, uh, State Route forty-four, east of I-4. So when you drive that, there's a two-ditch system. If you're taking a look at it, you've got the immediate swales outside of the road that collect the runoff from the road and take that to, uh, some stormwater ponds or treat it in those ditches. But then there's another system outside of that that collects all that water because that's a big basin through that area, that Tiger Bay area, that, uh, wants to go from one side of the road to the other and, uh, collects it in ditches, brings it to cross-drain pipes. Pipes come across and then it spreads back out along a ditch system on the downstream side so that you're mimicking as much as possible the historic condition. So, that would be the same kind of concept that you would expect to see from a developer, uh, that we would require them to do in situations.
My last question is, you know, we, we hear, you, you sat through, uh, all our, our past meetings here, the past few months. We hear from people that still have standing water in their yards and, and we've seen lakes that haven't gone down, the docks are still underwater, whatnot. Um, and, and you mentioned that it's gonna take a long time for some of these closed basins to, uh-
Right.
To get down to normal. Do we attribute that to, uh, solely to the, the, the type of storm and the frequency we just had? Or are there multiple problems that just being one of them?
Yes, sir. I think, I think the primary problem is, is the soil conditions in a particular area. That is usually the controlling factor, followed closely second by, um, not just the size of storms, but the frequency of storms. And when you take a look again at the stormwater charts annually, uh, like I said, the last seven years, you see that the, the rain levels keep increasing. Well, why is that important? Well, you know, after two thousand and five, it stopped raining effectively. So, the ground, the water in the ground had a chance to percolate. When you keep putting more water on top of it, it doesn't have a chance to percolate. Really what we'd need for some of these closed basins is for it to stop raining at the same level it has been raining over the last seven, eight years because that water just keeps stacking. And, you know, then you have the problems that we have overall. Now, again, that doesn't solve anybody's problem, not, not as saying that it does. There are other things that we need to look at in certain areas that, yeah, another solution needs to be found. But, uh, I mean, that is the fact of the matter is that, that it is raining more and that hasn't changed to the seasonal high elevation. That's why you'd see places not recovering today that six, seven years ago wouldn't have a problem because the years before that, there wasn't much rain. So-
Well, I, I, I understand that and I, I know there are cycles, there are cycles in the whole world. There are some cities that are under sand right now and some cities that are underwater. So, uh, it's just a matter of time. But, uh, while we're here, we have an obligation to do something about it. So thank you very much.
And I, I think that's why changing the sea, putting the safety factor on the seasonal high has the best effect, immediate, that we can move forward with.
And, and, and also if we're very conservative on what type of soil, right? If, if we just, if we just go to, "The soil's bad, you gotta max out."
Yeah, your pond is gonna be small, you're not retaining anything.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank you. Councilman Johansson's questioning had one pop up for me here, and that is, Mr. Kesby, we're talking about this closed basin solution. And I heard what you said, but for me, a solution for our residents can't be, "We just need no rain and we just have to wait it out." We, we, as an elected body, have to provide a solution for those people that two weeks ago, I think the number was like ninety-something days that they've been underwater in these closed basin areas where, and my question is this, what do we have to do as an elected body to get huge pumps to move this water from these closed basins on the west side to the St. John's River and on the east side to the intercoastal waterway? All water leads to the ocean eventually. So, to have these people underwater, like I drove by that Lions Club in Orange City. I'm like, how does this place still have this water four months later? Like, and I think about, you know, because I don't, I don't go up and down those streets to, to look, but I'm thinking there's gotta be people, because we hear them come up here at public testimony that are still dealing with this. What is the feasibility, what do we have to do to, in those closed basins when it's super wet years like this? That instead of telling our residents the solution is no rain and wait, the solution be, "We get permits, we get huge pumps, we're moving this water for you, we're gonna get it out."
Yes, sir. I would like to clarify, when, when I made that statement, it was along the lines of, "What would it take if we did nothing?" It wasn't indicating the county should do nothing. That, that is not what I'm advocating for anyway. We know in these closed basins that that water is not going to move. And in certain basins, it's gonna be worse than others based on the soils' conditions, the size of the uphill basin. Miller Lake, for example, uh, because it's the most common and everybody's got an idea about it. It's a large basin sending water to that area. And, uh, you know, development, development or not-
Tad, is that the one, really quick, let me ask you, is that the one, just so my mind is right on it? Because, you know, other than east side-
Right.
But is, is that the Miller Lake, the one that we've heard public pa- testimony where people come in and they, they talk about water coming from other areas into that basin? Okay.
Right. Yes, sir. Uh, it's right there on the border of Orange City, the south end, on the west side of seventeen ninety-two where they had to blow out during the storm and, and all that. So you have, uh, I mean, it's a large water body, but it's, there's a large contributing area in that basin that sends- in that basin that sends water to that low point. I mean, it, it collects there because gravity pulls it down there. And, you know, the rainfall is the same amount whether the ground is covered by impervious surface or open. And so when the water hits the ground, like we said, it does one of two things. It either runs off or goes into the groundwater. It's still the same amount of water. It's just either above ground or below ground and both find the low spot. It's just the runoff is going to get there quicker. You know, one of the ways to think about it, that may be easy for everybody to understand is, when you talk about the storms, the St. John's River doesn't peak during the storm in terms of its greatest elevation. It's going to peak seven or eight days afterwards because it takes the water that long to either move overground or predominantly through soils to get there. So that same thing is happening all across the county. So you get to these low spots in these closed basins. And that's why water level is rising in, in Miller Lake and a lot of these others weeks or even months after the storm because that groundwater is still getting there. Now, obviously it's better if it's groundwater because if it takes months, then we have an easier time pumping those types of things or taking care of them if we've got a system for doing so. But yes, I mean, for some of the worst areas, we're going to need to develop some way to move water around. Sending things to the St. John's River is never really that easy. I mean, we're balancing sending water to a place that usually receives it but is protected and should be. But finding ways to do that is not simple and easy.
Again, I'm pleased with, with your response, especially when I heard you say, we're going to have to do something. And, and I think everybody in here, if they don't understand it, they will understand it, that you can't put water in that St. John's when it's cresting. I get that. My thing is ninety, a hundred, a hundred and twenty days later, the St. John's is not cresting, but these people are still underwater. We need to provide solutions. Thank you, Ted.
County Manager George Reckon-Wall.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Ted had said. In fact, you know, we are looking at solutions and I met twice with St. John's Water Management District last week, which is going to be the ultimate regulatory body in, in this case, just with those very same concerns about when we can put it in the St. John's and how we would do it. The water has to be cleaned first. There's other factors to it. But I just want to let you know that we're not saying that we're not going to do anything. We're just saying that it's going to take some time and that's what we are, and we already in that process. And we do have a process and Mr. Bartlett, the Department of Transportation, City de Berry, we all work together to make sure that we did move water and continue to move water out of that area. And really, you, I believe we're already starting the process of putting the road back to its original elevation and that'll help with the access issue that's out there, I think, with several of the homeowners. So that's all being done and has been done and we hope to get something that's better in the future. But that will have to be analyzed as to what level of better we can, we can get to, given on the size and what we're allowed to do.
Chairman, may I respond to Mr. Reckon-Wall, very briefly?
Yes, go ahead and respond.
Uh, Mr. Reckon-Wall, thank you for that, that update because we heard before that St. John's River Water Management District was very eager to work with us and that they want to help. They know there's a problem and they want to help. So I'm appreciative that you shared that information with the public and us. Right now, my only piece of what you said was it's, you know, it's going to take time and the time that these people want to wait is like yesterday. So my, my point to you is, what does this elected body have to do to work with St. John's River to have that happen in less time than the timeframe that's going on in your mind? Because government moves usually at a snail's pace. These people have had water in their homes long enough. So that's my question is, what does this elected body have to do to give you the marching orders or our chairman the marching orders to say, hey, St. John's River Water Management, we're going to make sure the water is, has been cleaned before it comes to you, but we're giving you the water?
Well, the, the biggest part of, of any of this is identifying a location to take it to so that it can be treated and attenuated. And so we're, as I understand it, and Ben can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are working on a basin study to identify how much water because that will identify which size parcel we need and then finding something that's downstream. So we've already identified some, some larger parcels that we may talk to those property owners, but we've got to evaluate the volume that we're looking at. We've got to determine a route for getting to those properties. Because it's not only knowing where to take the water, it's how do you get it there? You've got to be able to lay the pipe somewhere or under something. And because it's more than likely, makes sense to do it as a permanent situation as opposed to a temporary situation because this will continue to happen when we hit the next wet cycle, if we're even out of the current wet cycle. So.
I don't hate the answer. I, I hate the timeframe that it's going to take. Thank you for, I, I'm appreciative that you all are moving on this.
Councilman Dempsey.
Ted, is it, is it fair to say that these new proposals and everything really aren't going to fix the problems down on Taylor Road, Miller Road, Lake Gertie and all those areas, correct?
Well, that's correct because this will only affect new developments. This does not go back and cause a retrofit. So anything adjacent to something that we'll be developing in the unincorporated will have the benefit of these restrictions and therefore should not have the same problems that those areas are generally saying.
So if it were possible to go back in time and put the current building codes, standards, state, local in place back in nineteen eighty, let's say, do you believe that the current flooding problem would be as bad as it is had we been building all along to our current standards for the last fifty years?
The.
I'm going back to the days.
You gonna give me any easy ones today, Don, or?
I'm sorry?
You gonna give me any easy questions today or what?
Troy wrote it down for me to ask you.
There's no simple answer to that. Any of the homes that were built prior to the stormwater rules being implemented in basically nineteen eighty-three, or if they're individual homes, they're already exempt. So a lot of the homes that you see, for example, in the Taylor Road area are, are built without the benefit of those requirements. Now, the other problem that they suffer from, and to me, the, the bigger issue is that the soils' conditions in those areas are terrible for percolation. You see it, to me, a good example of, of how important the soils' conditions are. If you go south of Taylor Road, you go down to Orange Camp. And right there at the corner of Blue Lake and Orange Camp, we have a stormwater pond in the northeast quadrant of that intersection. That pond is dry almost all the time and it recovers after storms, no problem. It sits at an elevation of about thirty, thirty-five, something along those lines. Now, you come east on Orange Camp and remember that section of Orange Camp rises. And you get, before you get to Victoria Park, their northern entrance, or their entrance on the northern side of Orange Camp, about midway in, there's a wetland. It sits at about eighteen feet above our stormwater pond. Well, the only reason that's holding water is because the soils underneath that are holding that water. I mean, otherwise, sitting eighteen feet higher, there's no reason there should be water there. So in a distance of about five hundred feet, you've got to change in your soils' conditions enough such that a pond much lower is constantly dry versus an area that sits eighteen feet higher and is always wet. So your soils' conditions are a huge factor in that area, in that area holding water. And so they'll be more susceptible to these issues like the time periods where you see the rain come through. I guarantee that probably between two thousand and six and two thousand and sixteen, if you looked at that properties, group of properties over there, it was probably dry as a bone.
So just to answer Mr. Kent's question and probably half the people, if not all the people here, want to have an answer, what's a quick fix that's going to cure this? And like down on Miller Lake, if we were to purchase or acquire strategic property like the Big Lots Pond, you know, to the south of the Big Lots Plaza, I mean, do you think that would provide a quick fix to the problems on Miller Lake?
I, I don't and, and I'm doing this without the benefit of getting into the nitty-gritty details, but it's all uphill of Miller Lake in terms of its elevation. It sits higher than there. And so that water is going to continue to make its way. Now, it may slow it down, but it's still going to get to Miller Lake. I mean, that's where gravity is pulling that water.
To the same extent?
No, I don't, again, it'll be slower, but I mean, it's still going to get there. I mean, gravity doesn't stop. It'll, you know, during an event, it would slow that water down. Again, remember the faster the two is surface water by quite a bit. But, you know, they were seeing water level rise, according to the residents, you know, ninety days after still, where that water level is still increasing.
Do we know how, since they put the weir in, do we know as of today where we are with?
I, I don't know in elevation, but I do know that, that the pump that we had in place had pumped to below its intake elevation. So the water level is, has been dropping. I don't know what the elevations were. I don't know that we even surveyed those elevations, but it's, it's below the, my understanding is below the entrance level or the road on the, the access road elevation.
Do we know if Lake Walla Walla is actually rising?
I can't imagine that it would be. I mean, it's upstream, so there's no reason it should be.
Do you think that strategic purchases for stormwater in any of these closed basins would help? Like Taylor Road or Lake Gertie or anything?
Probably the easiest solution on a lot of these places is to go ahead and purchase property. I mean, it gives you a, a double positive. I mean, you take somebody out of, out of jeopardy and you also give yourself the ability to potentially create volume. It won't be a huge amount. The, the better benefit is removing person, somebody from jeopardy. That's going to be the, the best solution. One of the things I would note is that, I mentioned it during the road program. We have a project on Orange Camp where we're looking at making some modifications to the east of seventeen ninety-two because of the traffic snarls. That's why it started. The traffic pattern in there is atrocious and so we wanted to resolve that. But we do go through that, that pond area that where the Publix Pond overflowed and there was water over the road. And there's water over that road anytime there's a large storm. It wasn't just because the Publix Pond blew out, so I will say that. But as a part of that project, even though we haven't moved into design, we are keeping our eye out for any of the homes that were negatively affected by the flooding. And we've actually just put under contract one of the homes already. So we are, you know, granted it's local option gas tax and road project money, but we need those spaces anyway because we've got to address, not that I don't care about our residents. My, I'm, my primary charge in that case is making sure the road doesn't flood. But that's the best way and we're accomplishing basically both goals that way. So we're looking at about maybe six to eight more properties in there where we're going to go ahead and buy those out and allow those people to, to go ahead and move to a different location and.
And last question, just any idea, any updates on the basin studies for the west side at least?
Then we'll have to answer that question.
Oh, here he comes.
Today is not his birthday.
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess we can beat up on him a little bit. Come on, get down here.
I apologize, you trailed off in the back. You had about, you asked about basin studies on the west.
I was just wondering if we had any updates. I'm sure these guys are all curious about these closed basin studies.
Yes, so we have met with our consultants and we are establishing the scope. It's a little bit of a process. You've got to go through and tell them exactly what you want. And they're going to come back to us with a, a proposal and a price and then we're going to get started. So I anticipate those coming to, start, starting to come to council here in the next few meetings. You're going to start seeing some of these scopes or these task assignments moving forward where we're going to start doing these basin studies. And then we've also met with just about all the cities and they've gotten their scopes to us for their Transform three eight six and we're gonna, we are going to start issuing task assignments for those here pretty soon. So I would think in the next meetings, you're going to start seeing quite a few of these task assignments coming forward for not just the county studies, but also the cities as well.
Part of those assignments would be our request to see a quick fix?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm stressing to them is expedience. We want to go fast and the, the, what we expect as far as deliverable goes is solutions, projects, identifying things. How do we get the water out of there? Do we build some big giant pumps or do we acquire property? Or can we get it out via gravity? And so that's what I'm stressing with every single one of them and they understand the assignment and that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I love the word expedience. I think everybody in this room wants to hear that. And I think we all could agree on how rapid these things get going. That being said, Ben is six to eight, you mentioned the word, I'm sorry, you mentioned the, the number, six to eight properties. Is that the ideal number? Or Ted?
That was specific to that particular project.
To that, and every situation is different. Obviously, you don't want to buy one piece of property here, one piece of property here. That doesn't do anything, doesn't do any good.
And it depends on why you're buying the property. If you're buying it because it continuously floods.
Yeah.
Then, you know, you're, you're getting somebody out of jeopardy, then yeah, you might jump around because the.
So, you know, every, everybody up here, with the exception of the Chair and Councilman Johansson, who had the entire county, has specific areas within their district. Obviously, they've heard about from their constituency. You know, there's not a lot of rural in, in District Two with the exception of Tamoka Farms Estates, which is a bad area and we need attention out there in a desperate way. But also, you know, a lot of it's in the city, you know, we, I think I bring it up every meeting with respect to Midtown. And I know that the Army Corps of Engineers is working on that project as well. Whatever help we can give them, obviously, I know we're included in that. That leads me to probably my question for Mr. Reckon-Wall. Everybody has made comments with respect to pumps and retention areas and acquiring properties for whatever reason to help with this. They put out some great sheets for us today with respect to acronyms and what they stand for. It just made me think, you know, we get a lot of questions. I know everybody up here has gotten the same questions from their, people in their communities that, well, what is going on? What is this? What is that? And I know the question's been asked before as far as putting that information out there so the public can be educated. A lot of times we'll ask the question, we already know the answer. But we're doing it for the purpose of educating, educating the, the public, but not everybody's tuned in. They wait for the news journal to put it out or, or whatever, or read it on social media. Do we provide that in detail or can we provide that in detail so people are better informed? So, I mean, I would have been, I mean, it may have been a silly question, but I think that most everybody would like to know what was going on so we don't get the questions repeatedly.
That was the purpose of the memo that you.
Exactly.
I mean, that was the whole purpose was to give out information that this is what's going on in parallel. Most of the stuff we're talking about right now, that's really not for tonight.
Very true.
You know, tonight was about the, these specific.
Ordinances.
Recommendations and ordinances, but just was also to let you know that in addition to this, there's a lot more coming and, and we are working on these other items.
Mr. Chairman.
To add to what Ben said too, the one basis study, the, the Taylor Road basis study is, is essentially complete. So you've got one of them that's already done, others to follow. The other thing I got to add to the Miller Lake story too, I, I believe, is we did previously buy six properties down there and remove them. So the effect of that is no houses flooded in this particular case. They lost their access to, to their houses. And we understand it's very serious and very nerve-wracking, but the, the properties habitually flooded were bought and torn down with the exception of one and that's been abandoned. It's a bank-owned and our intent would be to probably buy that property. It's not defensible. And, but again, really, Miller Lake's been an ongoing project for, for quite some time. So, and again, we hope to, again, we're not abandoning it at all. We got more to do. And we also, I failed to mention besides St. John's, I met with the receiving body right now of water owns the city of De Berry and to make sure where they were because they need time also for their system to recover for, for their city as well. So we're working this from many angles and I didn't want anyone to think that, you know, it's not just slow-going. It is steady-going and a lot has already been done.
One of the things we can do with regard to the basin studies and making sure the information gets out to the citizens is that once, uh, once the firms have been selected and started work, we can go ahead and add those to that capital project schedule.
I think that, that's exactly what I was getting at. That's, that's basically what I'm saying. It's just about informing people so they're not left in the dark. Thank you.
It won't make this next one, which will be coming out, I think, at the next meetings, or first meeting in March.
Okay, one, one more quick question, I hope. I'm, I just wanted, if, if you could unconfuse me, at the la, at the last, actually it was at Don's meeting that he had in here for District One. We were talking about Miller Lake and I suggested buying the professional center so we could store water there. And Ben said, well, it's, it's too low. It doesn't help us to store more there. We need to store it higher. Don just asked about Big Lots, which is higher, and, and you said it was too high. It wouldn't help. So which, I, I don't understand.
Yeah. I'll let Ben. I'll let Ben.
Well, what I said at the meeting was, when we get these large rain events, that site fills with water. By nature, it floods, right? The, the parking lot relative to the Wawa Pond and the Big Lots Pond is low, and so it fills with water. So acquiring that pond, or acquiring that property and digging it out, you're basically creating volume below the water level during the event. So that doesn't get you any additional volume when it occurs. That's what I meant by that.
Right, so if we could go up a little bit to, to Big Lots and get rid of that and store water there, even if we had to pump it up, would it not percolate slowly, and instead of rushing across the street to Lake Miller?
You would realize some value with that area. On the one, you are getting rid of some of the impervious surface, so you're changing that, but it still becomes groundwater. The issue becomes its proximity to Miller Lake. By being relatively close, just being on the other side of seventeen ninety-two, you still have that situation where while it's slower, it's still going there. Now, you can do it, you can put a pump in there, but in terms of bang for buck, it's not going to get you a whole lot. You're gonna be better off pumping Miller Lake directly in the first place. You'll get your greatest volume doing that.
Mr. Chairman.
What we're dealing with here is in these, when a hurricane comes, these large volume rain events, the water is such, of such an amount that it's staging all the way up and taking out a state road. It's a very rare instance when you see water go over a state road. So we could create some additional volume. It might help you in a twelve inch storm event. It might slow it down. As Ted said, the groundwater is still gonna work its way there. But in an eighteen inch rain event, it might help, but you're still gonna get the overflow, and you're still gonna get that water going there.
Okay, Councilman Santiago, you've been waiting a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, I hate to, but I'm going to be a bit of a parliamentarian here. If I could help guide us, we're here to deal with the ordinance before us, and we've been all over the place. And let's deal with the ordinance before us and ask questions pertaining to what's before us, and get to item two when we're done with this one. So I just, I'm just trying to bring the more effectiveness to the purpose of the meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and Jake, were you, you, you were up.
I have my name out for David, since he doesn't have a button.
Okay, thank you. No more questions? Is there any public comment on item one? And what I will do is call your name. If you could come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is in your face so we can hear you. And you can talk only about item one. That's the way the meeting is, that's how a special meeting operates. You can talk about item one, and you will have three minutes. You don't have to give us your address, but please tell us where you're from so your councilman knows that you are here. First, we have Elana Kraft. Nobody wants to go first. And then Catherine Pantay, and then Wendy Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Elena Kraft. I live in Ormond Beach. So today, my message is very simple, and I think, you know, after the last two hours or so, listening to a lot of different things that we don't really understand, it makes more sense for me to ask you to finally just stop making excuses and start implementing solutions. So for months on end, you've basically dragged the whole county through an exercise of denial and delays. Two meetings ago, Volusia's Public Works Director provided us with a lengthy justification for our current flooding. With the conclusion, for those who are able to follow, that there's little the county can do about flooding, since our flooding is due to higher rain amount. He even went on to say that we really can't predict where the next flooding will occur, so therefore, let's just wait and see. Mr. Kent unfortunately also made a point that he kinda doesn't agree with Mr. Brower's concern about the way the county is managing flooding. He said, look, it's, it's the rain. Well, today, I'm very happy that he, he realizes that, yes, the rain is a big factor, but we can still do something to address it. So really, the elephant in the room is this question. What actions will the county take to respond to the increased rainfall? Months of meeting, discussions, et cetera, have gotten us nowhere. There's nothing wrong with admitting you don't have the knowledge, skills, or expertise needed to tackle the biggest problem facing our county. It's okay to admit that you failed your constituents terribly, and it's okay to copy what other local governments are doing. For instance, just recently, New Smyrna has taken the following steps in responding to the increased rainfall and flooding risk. They proposed these, these items. Future developments will be designed to accommodate higher rainfall storm events like Ian. Let's make that our norm. Retention ponds, swales, ditches will be constructed to manage large volumes of water. New roadway design standards will be implemented for flood prevention. So copy some of that and add another common sense solution to your plan, which unfortunately, New Smyrna failed to address. Ban fill and build. It is a proven fact that fill and build makes the already dangerous problem of flooding worse. Recently, the city of Charleston, South Carolina passed an ordinance banning fill and build. This was a step in the right direction to protect the Charleston community. In a recent article, this quote is included, "The collaboration that led to this common sense ban on fill and build in the floodplain is what's needed not only to build Charleston resilience to climate change, but it can also serve as a roadmap for other cities hoping to take the problem of worse, hoping to tackle the problem of worsening flooding." So let's just do what we can, but solutions, not excuses.
Catherine Pantay, Wendy Anderson, David Hill.
Catherine Pantay, Daytona Beach. Good evening, Council. I request you deny the approval of Agenda Items one through three. These proposals are a weak and a slap in the face to every resident who has flooded and those who will flood in the future due to procrastination and failure to implement viable solutions by this council and county staff. Item one, page five, the six inch rule needs to be stricken. It allows for six inches of more fill on top of what calculations say is needed. Why are we still planning for fill? We need to ban fill and build development on wetlands and floodplains. On January first, twenty twenty-four, Charleston, South Carolina banned fill and build in construction in the hundred year floodplain. They have to adhere to the same FEMA rules as we do. The only roadblock to banning fill and build is our county and this council. Page seven, emergency spillways. Developers cannot allow a greater volume of water to pass through than what would have left it properly naturally. This doesn't stop developments from pumping out their ponds prior to a storm and saturating the surrounding neighborhoods or flooding them. Who controls the volume allowed to spill on someone else's property? Their answer is no one. There is nothing in this ordinance that offers protection or enforcement. Please direct your attention to this county's org chart. It should be up there somewhere. The top of the chart says citizens, next to the county council, then staff. According to this chart, we, the citizens of Volusia County, are supposed to be giving you the council direction, then you give staff the direction we gave to you. Somewhere along the way, this has been forgotten, and developers are giving you and staff direction on how and where this county is developing. Five of y'all's campaigns were funded by developers with the exception of Don Dempsey and Jeff Brower. One of you defended our local developers. Of the three names you mentioned, one of the plans to build a ninety-five interchange in Spruce Creek to accommodate another one of his developments with total disregard for the ecosystem that will be destroyed. Another is destroying the loop where old growth oaks are dying from the water they are sitting in. The third is wiping out the last bit of forest on Granada and Ormond Beach between US One and Nova. This is causing wildlife to be hit by vehicle or traffic as they are being forced out of their dwindling habitat. We, the citizens, have repeatedly requested a building moratorium during the lengthy downtime it takes to implement the many things the county and cities need to do in order to implement actual solutions to the flooding caused by development. Yes, we know you continue to defend and deny it as caused by development, by continuing to blame rain and stronger storms. What you forget is many of us grew up here and have been through many storms. We know the terrain has changed by clearcutting, filling in wetlands, irresponsible development patterns. These practices are what caused our established neighborhoods to flood when they have never flooded previously. I am asking this council to work for the citizens of this county and revisit implementing a moratorium in unincorporated Volusia with a no annexation clause until we get real workable solutions in place. What is currently being proposed is weak and ineffectual. We need bold, effective solutions, such as no building on wetlands and elimination of mitigation banks, as well as strong rural boundary charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wendy Anderson, you'll be followed by David Hill, and David will be followed by Pam Phillips.
Good evening. I just have a couple of quick comments on the stormwater rules, and, and one is, I agree with, with Ms. Pant and, and Ms. Kraft, who both said that the, the six inch addition of fill is really not going to solve any problems. It isn't, with the exception maybe of Venetian Bay, which had a design flaw from the very beginning. We don't see our newer developments flooding. We do not need to do anything that raises fill to protect them more. They're already fine. It does increase the toe slope or the width of the total fill, which can then impact runoff or, or the displacement of water in the surrounding neighborhood. So I would strike that one. I would also suggest that, it's just kind of a precursor to the LID conversation, which comes next. When we talk about the, the site location of, of where we put our ponds, there's something kind of clever about putting the pond in the middle rather than on the outside or the perimeter of the development. That one kind of makes sense on the surface. But on the other hand, if we really can adopt LID principles and actually put them into place more than a volunteer level, we don't need ponds. We don't need ponds as big as we currently have them. It doesn't matter where we put them, in the center or on the edge. The whole idea of having low impact development in place is that you are decentralizing the stormwater. You don't centralize it into a single or a few ponds. You decentralize where that stormwater goes into swales or rain gardens or all these other smaller places so the water can infiltrate closer to where it falls. So I'm ambivalent about that one, about where you cite it. It does help protect adjacent properties if there were to be seepage or a failure of the berms, but, but I would just say it's irrelevant if you do LID correctly. And then, and the conversation you all just had, which was sort of off topic for the agenda items for tonight, I would love to jump in and have conversations with each of you individually, but one of the things that, that Ted and Ben both just said, and Ted in particular is a really, really good point, is that you have this volume of stormwater that's going to move across the landscape. It's either gonna move on the surface, or it's gonna move in the groundwater, or below surface. It's the same volume either way, and he's saying that it's gonna get to that low spot. In that case, he was talking about Miller Lake, whether it goes on the surface or it goes beneath. It does slow down as it moves below surface. It is better for it to move below surface. And we should do everything we can to get the water below surface to slow that flow. So that's what LID does. Slow, spread, soak.
Thank you for your comments. David Hill. You'll be followed by Pam Phillips, who will be followed by Gary Singleton.
Dave Hill, Ormond City, Don Dempsey's my commissioner. When I read this ordinance number one, I was, got really excited about it because it said runoff should be based on the most critical situation. I was like, dang, that's solid. That's based on Helena Milton. But if it's based on what you've had there before, it doesn't work. You know, we need to increase that elevation, the requirements, because Helena Milton shows us that we're not capable of handling that. Also, it says stormwater ponds should be located internally if possible. But once you say if possible, that just leaves the door open for it's not gonna be possible. And if you have an emergency spillway attached to that storm pond, that means the surrounding property owners who've not had a problem are gonna get flooded, and that's where the real issue is. I think if you require the permittee, the engineer, and the developer, when they do this land, if you require them to post some kind of maintenance bond that will protect the surrounding property owners, I think you'll see a lot of these problems going away. And, and make that happen through, through the, the, the building process and ten years after the process, because you really want to protect the people that have been there and not had a problem. Developers, they want to squeeze every ounce that they can get out of a property, and I understand that. That's the American way to make money. But people are suffering if we don't require that water to stay on the property. So those are the things I'd like to say, and I do appreciate everything you all do and, and what you're doing, and thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Pam Phillips, followed by Gary Singleton, followed by J.C. Figurato.
So, good evening. My name is Pam Phillips, and I reside in Ormond Beach. So I know I'm not alone when I say I'm extremely disappointed that all of you, with the exception of one, voted no on the moratorium of construction in Volusia County. I'm not sure if this moratorium can be reconsidered, but I certainly hope that it can and that common sense will prevail. The improvements being recommended tonight are a decent start at fixing things, but they do nothing to protect us from the ongoing construction activities, as well as with projects already in the pipeline. It's already been said this evening that once a development is done, you're stuck with it. Well, a moratorium would allow the county to update its zoning and land use development codes and address critical situation we're in now. So I've read through all of the documents regarding each agenda item, and I'm gonna begin with my comments on Agenda Item number one. Back on, on page thirteen, it was within the minutes of the Environmental and Natural Resources Advisory Committee, sorry, I'm gonna call out Mr. Caspier. It was, it's a quote where he's talking about FEMA maps and floodplain changes, and, and then the use of LiDAR and LiDAR maps, which, you know, change the contours. But you added, and this is a quote, FEMA maps were designed to be a recommendation for flood insurance, not design purposes. And, and that's, I, I beg to differ, that's not true. FEMA maps are used for design purposes for building requirements. And any floodplain changes absolutely have to be included in design calculations. And it's just kind of ridiculous to think that they pertain only to flood insurance. And then on page eighty, the way it's worded, it seems that requirements for underground storage are being summarily dismissed, which really should not be the case. Maybe I misunderstood that. And then on page eighty-one, back in July of last year, discussion ensued, this is in quotes again, "Discussion ensued regarding exploration of redevelopment standards, creating a balanced approach and reflects a decrease in regulations, and the committee's desire to make redevelopment easier." Really. Okay, pages one twenty-eight through one thirty spells out recommendations that don't appear in the ordinance. Why not? Specifically, modeling higher intensity storms. One of the presentations shows that storm intensification between the year nineteen hundred and two thousand, we had two, and between two thousand and two thousand twenty-four, we've already had four one hundred year storms. And then also on the low impact development and green water storm, green stormwater infrastructure. You've got these incentives in there that are crazy. The incentives are increased density, increased intensity, building height, and/or reduced setbacks. Anyway, it's ludicrous. The technique should be required without any incentives. I'm sure developers will continue to come.
Thank you for your comments. Gary Singleton, followed by J.C. Figurito, followed by Melissa Lammers. If y'all want to come down, there's seats on the front row. It'll save us a little time.
Sorry, I thought there was another person in front of me, so I wasn't quite ready. Okay. My name's Gary Singleton. I live in District Three. Delay, deflect, defend, defeat. Tactics used to subvert the will of the people. Hundreds attended the opening discussion of a temporary moratorium. We came to have our voices heard and witness your plans for action. But certain members were unprepared to engage in a discussion of the single most devastating issue in Volusia County history. The opening discussion of this pressing issue was delayed sixty days. The only action taken by this council was to limit the amount of time you would have to be forced to listen to the stories of suffering and financial ruin. With sixty days to prepare, staff spent hours putting on a dog and pony show. With 60 days to prepare, staff spent hours putting on a dog and pony show and overwhelming and sometimes incomprehensible litany of charts and graphs accompanied by commentary of the experts who created them. The entire purpose of this show was to deflect any and all blame away from developers and firmly establish the culprits to be rain and ocean tides. Use of smoke and mirrors by staff for the purposes of defending status quo development patterns while giving cover to the politicians who have no intention of allowing any substantial actions to be taken. Developers have always had the choice to do the right thing. You now expect Volusia County citizens to believe profit-motivated developers will voluntarily reduce their profit margin just to avoid flooding of neighboring properties. To defeat us, they will use the first three tactics to string Volusia County citizens along, wearing us out, and ultimately defeating the will of the people. What is the purpose of having ordinances if, in truth, they are only suggestions? You were provided common sense suggestions for actions that would protect Volusia County citizens from the ravages of flooding. Require low-impact development standards. Prohibit draining watersheds and wetlands. Prevent anyone from directing any excess water onto neighboring properties. We are here to put you on notice. We are not deceived by dog and pony shows. We see through the smoke and mirrors, and we will not be gaslit by hot air. Show us where you have done anything Volusia County citizens want you to do.
Is J.C. in the room? I didn't see him anywhere. Did J.C. leave? Okay. Melissa Lammers, followed by John Chaney, followed by Connie Colby.
Good evening. Melissa Lammers, District 4. As you all know, I am the current Chair of the Environmental Natural Resources Advisory Committee. I'm a citizen volunteer who cares deeply for my fellow citizens, and that is why and the other 13 members of the committee devote our time and our knowledge to the task that was placed before us. When EnRAC was reinstated in 2022, it was in part because some of the ordinances that support our environmental minimum standards were 30 years out of date, and they needed to be updated. We were provided a work plan that tracks ordinances, not to broad problems, but to specific ordinances. We worked hard, and in fact, we struggled a great deal over the stormwater ordinance that's before you tonight, that is Agenda Item 1, and it's destined to minimize future flooding. That is hard to talk about when we're hearing about current flooding. We don't have a time machine. I wish we did. We can't go back and change the things from the past. But I would like to point out, to manage our expectations, that we need to be prepared that this stormwater ordinance will be updated potentially sooner rather than later in a much shorter timeframe than previous ordinances. There are basin studies underway. Those may yield new information that's going to require changes to this current ordinance, and the state stormwater rules may also impact it and drive some changes. This is not a problem. It is timely due diligence to incorporate new and relevant information as it becomes available. Lastly, I'd like to reiterate what we learned in this special session on the 14th. Regardless, moratorium or not, flooding issues are complex, and they will not be solved by one ordinance. I look forward to talking a little bit about LID in the next ordinance, and I do hope that we find solutions to fix the current flooding issues, because obviously they're very severe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Chaney, and then Connie Colby.
Before my time starts, can you please put up the slide that had the location verbiage? It was Tad Caspier's, Tad Caspier's slide that had the recommendations for the verbiage for the location of the ponds.
Okay.
John Chaney, I'm here representing Westminster Wood in the Deland area. Our subdivision is basically in Councilmember Johannesson's scenario. We are C. We are the low spot. Property A is Victoria Park. It's a wet pond. The adjoining adjacent property in this verbiage would be the County Road South Blue Lake. We are having underground water intrusion from Victoria Park into our stormwater pond, and we are continuing to pump the water out of our pond into other areas of our subdivision. What I would recommend is where you have the exterior stormwater pond is located adjacent to a perimeter property line, and the property, adjoining property is one foot lower, I'd also recommend that you add, or if there's a stormwater pond within 500 feet of, 500 feet of the exterior pond, which would address our real-life scenario. Other than that, I am in favor of the amendment. I understand the amount of hard work and energy that has gone in to this, and I realize that this is a living document that we're at the beginning. We haven't solved the solutions, but we're working towards solutions, and this would help a future subdivision. That's already developed by adding that verbiage. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Colby, and then if Sarah Lee Morrissey wants to come down to the front row, and John Nicholson.
Good evening. Connie Colby, Ormond Beach, District 4. The purpose of one of the amendments says that it's creation of a flexible voluntary process to implement low-impact development and green stormwater infrastructure with incentives. Having read the attached material for today's meeting and attended the flooding meeting on January 14th, I would suggest that the council consider sending this back to include some of the seven directions that were proposed on January 14th. Most of these were not available at the time that they were going through this process to incorporate these three amendments. Words such as voluntary incentives and bonuses should be stricken. We need rules in place to protect the wetlands and surrounding properties. If the developers don't understand that wetlands and natural resources management areas cannot be built on, nor FEMA-designated flood hazard areas or areas vulnerable to sea level rises, then it has to be written down in black and white. In addition, I would like to suggest that when projects do come forward, that they're accompanied by maps that show the wetlands on the properties and an aerial view of the properties within about a half a mile of the properties that are in question for being able to see what other properties are affected. Most of the maps that show up on the newspaper for the notices only show the property boundaries and nothing around them. If fill or mitigation banks are being used, that information should be in bold print. We are being offered three recommendations. I choose, neither one or two are acceptable to me. Number three needs to have the words hybrid and voluntary removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Lee Morrissey, followed by John Nicholson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Brower, members of the council. My name is Sarah Lee Morrissey, District 2, Daytona Beach. I'm here tonight on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County to provide support for this specific ordinance, 2025-26. This is, the league is supportive of the work that EnRAC is doing to provide meaningful design change, and in particular, tonight, stormwater management recommendations. This ordinance is the first of what we anticipate will be more to come, but it is the beginning of some very hard work. The league believes in studying and educating on issues before taking action, and I can say that on behalf of EnRAC, of which I am a sitting member of EnRAC, considerable time has been taken to discuss many issues, but in particular, the issue of flooding and stormwater. Obviously, as you've already mentioned tonight, there's a lot of different things that have to be done to address existing flooding, but you would be remiss to not also address future conditions. And this stormwater ordinance, as I said, is the beginning of trying to address future conditions so that we can avoid situations that we find ourselves in today. And with that, good work, and thank you very much.
Thank you. John Nicholson, followed by Tyler Monberg, followed by Patricia Joslin.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. Couple of things. One, we were going to address the issue of saving the wetlands, and if I understand correctly, we don't have a problem with saving the wetlands in the county. It's the cities that are destroying the wetlands. The county's doing a good job about the wetlands, so that is, as far as I'm concerned, solved. The issue of the fill and build has not been mentioned or has not been solved. That has been popping up for the last four months, and if there's ever going to be an issue, fill and build is one of them. I've not heard anything about stem walls, which is a lot easier to do than fill and build. It will not affect neighbors. Retention ponds, wet or dry retention ponds, the topography maps. When one has a house in the low end of the system, you're going to get the water. If you're on top of the hill, generally you don't flood. If you are downhill, depending on where you're at and what happens, the water will bypass your house and still flood at the bottom of the gully. So what are we going to do if this is always going to be the case? There's a family out there, actually several, that have been out of their house, well, what, a week ago was 92 days, and now they're probably at 100 and some odd days of water in their yards. That has got to be addressed. I don't know how we do it. I know Ben has talked about it, but that has got to be number one priority. People can't sit in standing water for month after month. All right? We really have to address that first. Secondly, this 100-year storm, 25-year storm, 24/7, or whatever it's called, we have to update that. That's a given. All right? If nothing else, fill and build, and the stormwater. How long and how much are we going to have to build to? Build to the maximum. I know we don't want to do that. It's expensive, but why sit there and have these people flood year after year? So let's change that. Relocation. I mean, we're not going to relocate half of Volusia County. It's just not feasible. So the idea of buying our way out of this is not a solution. As we saw at Miller Lake, they bought several homes, and it still was flooding. All right? It's at the bottom of the bowl. So what are we going to do with the house at the bottom of the bowl? That I think you should look at. First and foremost are those three things before we get into the idea of taking it and piping it out to St. John's River. It's not going to help piping it to St. John's River. We have some huge machines to get it out that far and some huge pipes, because this is going to happen year and year. So we're in a flooding rainy season. We have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tyler Monberg, followed by Pat Joslin, followed by Ann Miller. Ann will be our last speaker. Tyler?
Good evening. I'm Tyler Monberg. I live on the south end of Deland, 465 McGregor Road. So, Mr. Dempsey, I believe I'm in your district. I'm one of the members of EnRAC. I put a lot of time into some of these code changes that are here tonight, but a lot of time into code changes that are not here tonight. So what I want to talk about is something that Tad mentioned at the beginning, that this is kind of the first shot of things. This is what we had unified agreement within the committee, that there weren't going to be unintended consequences of making these changes. These are things that are going to strengthen the reliability of our existing codes. So talking about the six-inch safety standard on seasonal high-water tables, what that's going to affect the most are open basin situations where we're going to over-design our ponds a little bit. Is it going to result in more fill probably on some sites? But it's going to give us more reliability than changing the design storm, and ultimately it's not going to change the rainfall on the sites. It's going to increase the stormwater holding capacity as a result of that. It's going to increase the reliability of the recovery. All of those things are going to do something to improve our flood attenuation and prevention for the site and for the neighboring sites. In terms of sites raised cause flooding adjacent, I think that there's some misunderstanding in how that's happening. If you raise a site and you have water flowing from the adjacent site to it and you don't accommodate that flow, yeah, that can cause flooding. If you raise a site and you don't have a stormwater system that actually works, and it pushes water to everybody else and you're the only thing sticking out of the lake, yeah, that might have made things worse. But if the rules are followed correctly, if the information we have is valid, which part of that is we're setting some geotech standards and other things, our systems should work. So that's why we have the six-inch rule that we were suggesting. That's why we suggested looking at pond placement. That's also why we suggested looking at our pond berm stability analysis if your pond is going to be located near an adjacent property line where there could be question, especially if it's above grade, holding water above the adjacent grade. So then the spillway item, I think that one got a little bit misunderstood, and I actually see this one as one of the most valuable. If a pond fails and it overtops and the berm blows out, that's insult on top of the injury of it failing. The spillway is meant to give us a graceful failure mechanism. So something went wrong in the design. We don't want it to get worse during the flooding event, during the storm event, like what happened with the Publix Pond, like what happened at Freedom Elementary, like what we've seen happen in other places in various storms. Miller Lake actually had the DOT Pond blow out in Fay. It blew out again after Fay due to design issues. So there's a lot of these things that we've put together that these are good ideas to move forward with. This isn't going to be the end of the conversation. We have our next three months of topic at EnRAC are discussing where can we go further, but what we don't want to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. You know, we recognize there's a problem, but we have to be diligent in our solution, and we have to make sure that we contemplate the solutions.
Thank you. Pat Joslin, followed by Ann Miller.
I'm Pat Joslin with Mr. Dempsey's district. I live off of Taylor Road. In speaking only to number one, item one, I went to one of these people's meetings, and I spoke at that meeting right after Milton, and I said they're not doing enough, and it's not enough. If it's not enough, then you're going to have three foot on Taylor Road. So it's not enough. It needs to continue to do something else, and I apologize to you guys, but it's that, whatever the six-inch they're talking about, there's not enough holding the water. We need to hold the water, and we need to make every subdivision hold their own water, whether it's the city of Deland or the city of Ormond City. They should not flood those of us that have been there for 25 years. Thank you.
And Ann Miller.
Thank you. I'm also from the Taylor Road area. I actually live on the north side of Rockingham, near War Admiral, where we're actually, where we're getting flooded from the reserve at Victoria. Mr. Kent talked about the, and I appreciated it, the need for people who have been out of their homes for 90 or 120 days to receive immediate attention. I just want to make the point that you don't have to wait 90 to 120 days to have a devastation. After just a few hours, you've lost tens of thousands of dollars' worth of property. After a few days, the mold starts. I can testify personally of this, and so can many people in here. So what I want to say is I appreciate that we have to deal with the future. I understand that. But we need to move beyond even, we need to back up even beyond helping people after they've been out of their homes for months. We need to stop it from happening at the beginning, because we will never recover the money that we had to spend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes the public participation on item one, so I will open it up to council for... So I will open it up to council for debate. We can approve or deny the ordinance as written or we could suggest changes. If we do that, I would suggest that we send those changes back to staff to make. They're capable instead of sending it back to EnRac because they have a, they already have a busy schedule ahead of them with some really important stuff concerning chapter 50. So what is your, what is your pleasure, council?
Mr. Chair?
David Santiago, go ahead.
I move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilman Santiago makes a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Second, Johansson.
And I have debate, Mr. Chair.
And that is seconded by Jake Johansson. And yes, continue on Councilman Santiago.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think all great comments from the members of the public. I appreciate also some commentary from members of the EnRac Committee that gave their personal thoughts on what's presented. I agree that this is only a start. I'm committed as an individual council member to continue, but I don't think we should not pass this because there's some good stuff in here. And I think the work continues. So I don't want to be accused of kicking the can. I think there's good stuff here. Let's keep working on it. And I think this council will be committed to it as we learn more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir. I also would like to recognize all the hard work EnRac did. And I understand there was probably some contentious portions of that before you got where you got. And I appreciate that as well. I hope more comes out of the EnRac. Maybe not unanimously, but still provide the information. I agree with Mr. Santiago as well. I believe this is, as people have said here, a living document. It's a good start. And I snuck over and asked the attorney if we do do any changes, whether we can just do line item and adopt tonight because I think taking it back at this point for little edits would not be in the best interest of the county or this council for that matter. So we'll see how the rest of the debate goes. But I'd like to vote on this and move past it. Thank you.
Councilman Vice Chair Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. I have to agree. I heard a comment that stuck out tonight. This particular ordinance, what they came to was a unified agreement with EnRac. So that being said, with the fact that it's a living document, the fact that it is continuing and the fact that we can, and it's going to change, as you said, it will change. We've seen flooding change. We've seen rain events change. This document will have to change to reflect that. But us not doing anything and kicking it back for, like Mr. Johansson said, for a minor fix here and there, we have to do something. And I think it was said earlier, we have to act now. So I'm in agreement as well.
Thank you. Yes, thank you to the EnRac Committee, those of you on the committee that are here. Not just this ordinance, but all three of them represent a huge amount of work. And I don't think anybody on this council has any condemnation for what you've done or it's just not everything. And that wasn't possible to get everything done. I agree with what the vice chair just said and I think Jake as well, that this is a living document and we're going to have to add to it. There's things that, you know, I made notes of as we went along. We have a 25-foot buffer required around wetlands. I'd like to see that increased to 100 feet. Troy suggested changing the wetland rule. That we are restricted somewhat by the state of Florida, but we are allowed, there's many changes that we could make to the wetland rules. That probably needs to come back, Troy, and that can be. This is all somebody, the public said it, I think Mr. Reinhardt might have said it. This affects the future. Everything that, all three ordinances that we're going to deal with tonight are affecting the future. It's not affecting current stormwater problems, flooding. Although I noted going through the, all the material that Jessica Gao from EnRac said, some of these things, some of the lid standards could be applied to existing conditions, to existing developments, to retrofit them. So that's something that we can look at in the future. The one thing that really concerned me, and Tyler brought it up again, was the spillways. And I, I won't hold this up without this, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask staff to bring it back. I understand we have to have an emergency outlet or we have another situation like we had in Orange Camp Road. But we now have current flooding in a lot of the people that are here, especially around Taylor Road to Orange Camp Road, whose properties are not just wet, but they are flooded. And they've remained flooded under feet of water for a long time because of the spillways at Sawyer's Landing and the park. And so how we can just continue that Victoria Park, how we can just continue that without any regulation of how much water they can dump on their neighbors is just obscene, in my opinion. We're flooding, we're ruining people's homes. And we can't just say, well, spillways are required. They are, but they have to be controlled as well. They have, we have to know how much water we're dumping and not just be happy to flood our neighbors. So I don't know how we do that, council. I would like to see spillways come back and buffers around stormwater ponds and buffers around wetlands. Everybody here has asked in the public, can we deal with something that's going to help us now? And so I know the staff is well aware of that. This is the first step. And it's not even the seven solutions that were given. But we have, we all know up here that staff is working diligently on that because their keeping is updated with what they're doing. I'm just going to ask you to not give up hope. All those things are coming back. And Ben Bartlett said, you know, the basin studies are coming back shortly. They will come back. This council will make sure that they come back because we're not going to let go of it. So Councilman Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. I just will state publicly, you know, you being in that center chair, some would say, you know, it's, doesn't lend you the power because you can't make a motion. But one of the positives about being in that center chair, and I'm just commenting on what you said, is that you and staff, George, are able to put things on the agenda. If the rest of us want to get something on the agenda, we talk about it and get majority four of us to agree that we want that to happen. So I would just say, I'm so pleased to hear some of the things that you've talked about, even some of my ideas. And I agree, I don't want to hold this up. And I think that you have a really great opportunity to bring those items back to us and have them put on the agenda for us to have a healthy discussion about. Thanks.
Anyone else? We have a motion on the table to approve item one, the ordinance on stormwater. It is a start. And if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item one is passed as is and will come back with future considerations. That takes us to item two. Two and three both include, it's dealing with low-impact development. And Director Urban, you're going to kick this off?
Yes, sir. Clay Urban, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you tonight are going to be two different items. First will be a comprehensive plan amendment, which is necessary based on our review of the comprehensive plan. Many of you who were on the council previously remember that we initiated an effort to identify obstacles, both in our comp plan and in our land development regulations to implementation of LID, low-impact development. And so that we'll talk through those to show you what has got to be changed in order for us to successfully implement low-impact development standards. Then the other is the actual amendments to the code to allow for low-impact development. Ginger Dare is going to take you through both of these items at the same time, if the council's okay with us doing that so that that, because there's such overlap with them. It's important for us to be able to get that to you. So no further ado, here is Ginger Dare.
Good evening, council and Mr. Chair. I'm Ginger Dare. I'm the Environmental Management Director for Volusia County. And I'm really pleased to be able to present to you tonight the work that we've been doing on low-impact development. Ooh, sorry. Just ran. Also with me, I have Keith Abramson. He is our county forester and environmental permitting manager. And I have Samantha West. She is our sustainability and resilience manager. And they did a significant amount of work on this with the other staff. So I just want to thank them for their work. I'm up here talking to you, but you know, they're the ones really pulling the weight. Okay. So like Clay said, you have two agenda items. I'm going to do one presentation that kind of covers both. A little background information about low-impact development and some common terminology. You guys have seen this before, but I just wanted to bring it back. So low-impact development is, includes a variety of site design practices that are intended to mimic the natural stormwater process on site. The goal is to avoid and minimize additional runoff from site development. And that avoid and minimize is important language and we'll talk about that. One element of low-impact development is green stormwater infrastructure. And the goal of the green stormwater infrastructure is to mitigate that runoff that is produced. So you've taken those first two steps. Now you have the amount of runoff that'll be produced on a site. And the green stormwater infrastructure is to mitigate that runoff. So like I said, it's really one element of low-impact development. And the green stormwater infrastructure is intended to be used like a treatment train. I think you heard Wendy talk about earlier, the distribution of stormwater across the site. That's where this green stormwater infrastructure comes in. This is a slide you've probably seen before. And it's just one easy way to think about the concepts of low-impact development as this three-part approach. So step one is you limit the area that generates stormwater runoff. So you have the site and if you can eliminate creating additional stormwater runoff through site design principles, that's step one. So for instance, you protect the wetlands on site, right? And they serve as natural flood protection. So that's sort of step one. Step two is then when you have your developed areas, how do you minimize the amount of stormwater they produce? Pervious pavement, things like that. And then step three is you use this mix of natural and structural elements to attenuate the stormwater that's created. So that we get back to that avoidance, minimization, mitigation, much like how we deal with wetlands in Volusia County. So I just have a couple of visual images that sort of explain low-impact development in a very basic way. So the image on the left is what maybe a traditional residential development might look like. Where the houses are sort of spread across the entire site. You have a sort of larger network of roads. The image on the right displays what might be a low-impact subdivision, where the houses are more clustered. You see a larger area that's preserved as natural area. You reduce the amount of fill you need on that site because most of the site is retained in its natural topography. And there can be lower infrastructure costs, right? Because the amount of roadways, you know, pipes, all that is reduced because the development is clustered in a smaller area. So that's just one example, a little bit of a visual for us to think about. Here's another visual. So you can see on the left, a conventional subdivision with curb and gutter type development. The water hits the curb, it goes into an inlet, it goes right to the pond versus maybe an LID subdivision where you get some of that water out of the pond, excuse me, early, right? So you have curb cuts, that water goes into these vegetated swales. Eventually, that might make its way to a pond. But these swales take up volume, improve the water quality by the vegetation. And if you have enough of these types of elements, your pond could actually be smaller because of the volume getting there is less. So these are just a couple of examples. There are, of course, many examples for other types of development, commercial, industrial, those sorts of things. Okay. A little bit of history. I know that's not super exciting, but wanted to remind everybody where we've come from. So in 2022 and 2023, we actually applied for and received a grant from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity to hire a team of experts to help us understand how to implement low-impact development in Volusia County. So that grant team included folks from the UF Program for Resource-efficient Communities. They're really one of the experts in Florida on low-impact development. And we had staff from the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. They created a team. They came together and gave us an LID implementation manual. And it was really looking at other cities in Florida, other communities outside of Florida, looking for best practices, who's doing what, what are the lessons learned? So we got that manual from them. And we worked with EnRac throughout the grant process, presented the work of the grant team to EnRac, and they came up with a recommendation for you all. And their recommendation was to use this code audit tool that exists with the University of Florida and create a hybrid LID program whereby some elements of LID are required. And then other elements would be optional or voluntary with incentives. So sort of on the spectrum of how you could implement LID, there's the completely voluntary with incentives. There's the completely mandatory. And your EnRac Committee at the time recommended sort of middle of the road. Some things are required, some things are voluntary. So in October of 2023, I came and presented to you all, similar to what I've shared with you today, the recommendation from EnRac. Your direction at that time was to use that code audit tool and look at all of our codes that we have right now and find barriers to implementing LID that exist within our current codes and to create a voluntary LID program with incentives. So at that time, that was your direction to us. We have taken that direction and have brought to you. Well, let me, let me slow down. So from 2023 to 2024, we did that work. The staff did that. We had staff from 16 different divisions within the county. And we had multiple meetings with EnRac to create what you see before you, which is the comprehensive plan amendment, the code changes, and an LID guidance manual. So we had a few-month comment period where EnRac made comments. We sent out the program to VCard, We sent out the program to V-card, environmental groups, private sector engineers, developers, everybody we could think of that might have a stake in this. And then we presented this program to the PLDRC in November of '24. At that PLDRC hearing, we did a similar presentation. And they made a recommendation, two things. One was to remove the density bonuses as one of the incentives. And we'll talk more about that when we get a little bit down the road. And then, so their motion was to approve it or to recommend approval without that incentive. They also had a second request, which was for the council to go back and reconsider that hybrid approach in which some things are mandatory. Which was, you know, the original recommendation from Enrec. What you have in your packet is exactly what went to PLDRC. The staff did not make any changes from that. And we are just bringing exactly what we sent to them and letting you know what their recommendations were. Okay, so a little bit about the structure of how we would propose to implement your direction. One is the first agenda item, which is the comprehensive plan changes to encourage LID practices. That's ordinance 2025-02. Then there are zoning ordinance and land development code changes that actually set the standards. That's the second ordinance before you, that's in item three. And then there's the development of the guidance manual. And that guidance manual has all the details that a developer or property owner would use to create a low-impact development community. And that is, would be adopted through the resolution that's attached in item three. So there are three things for your consideration and two different agenda items. The other thing is that we have a matrix that has all of the best management practices, all the incentives to try to make it easier for folks to, to create their program. I did want to point out that the manual being adopted through the resolution is intentional because we know that there'll be new practices that come along. We know we'll learn something as people start to use the manual. Maybe some BMPs work really well, maybe some never get used or just don't work as well. Maybe there are new incentives. So we've proposed a system where the changes to the manual would be done through your development review committee. So that we can be a little more nimble in reacting to how well the program is working. Okay, so a little specific. So the first ordinance is the comprehensive plan amendment. And those are changes to the future land use element. So all, all of the language, of course, is in your packet. Just briefly, we added some definitions, clarified some definitions. One of the things that we have proposed is to allow conservation subdivisions, which is something that already exists in your code, in urban residential land use designations. So right now, conservation subdivisions are allowed in the environmental core overlay or directly adjacent to it, but not in any other future land use categories. And so we wanted to expand the use of those conservation subs in the other urban categories. The comp plan amendment would also allow clustering and density bonuses in the urban land use categories. And so I want to be really clear that it wouldn't be in rural areas or environmentally sensitive areas. But one of the things that we heard is if you're going to make a program voluntary, then there need to be incentives significant enough for the developers or the property owners to do the program. So the density bonuses would be up to eight units in the urban low category and up to 16 in urban medium. Again, no density bonuses in rural or environmentally sensitive areas. The comp plan also would allow intensity increases, so that would be for commercial development in urban, commercial, and industrial land uses. And the comp plan amendment would prohibit fill in the floodplain for the purposes of new residential lots. So that means, you know, potentially if you had a subdivision and you had to fill a little bit in the floodplain for access to the, you know, upland portions, but no creation of new lots that are within the floodplain. So again, this ordinance is item two, which when we get there, you'll have to vote on them separately. Item three is the ordinance 2025-03. And that is the changes to the zoning ordinance and the land development regulations. And because we're proposing changes to the zoning ordinance, this does require two hearings. So this would be the first hearing. The comp plan changes have to be submitted to the Department of Commerce for their review and the Volusia Planning, Growth Management Commission. So those would go out for comment before you could have the final action on those. So the zoning code changes would be to allow those incentives that we'll talk about a little bit more by right. So what that means is you don't need a variance to do some of these things. You don't need a waiver, you don't have to do a rezoning for the things that are listed in this program. And then also it removes some barriers to low-impact development just that are in the code right now. So I'll give you one easy example. So right now, the zoning code says you have to have continuous non-mountable curb around all landscape islands and parking lots. Well, one of the low-impact development practices is to allow some of that stormwater to go into those landscape islands, both for volume and for water quality. But you can't do that if you have a continuous curb, right? And so that's a barrier that exists in our code that prohibits people from doing some of these practices right now. So there are a few other of those in the zoning code that we would propose to remove. And then in the land development code adds a provision to add fire services to the concurrency requirements. Something that we do now, but it's just not expressly said in the code right now. Also, we talked about allowing those conservation subdivisions in the urban residential land use designations. And then it adds a new division to the land development code, which is low-impact development. And really, all of that is, is sort of the process for how you would do the development. What are the things you have to submit? You know, how do we look at it? How do we, you know, communicate with the applicant? Really the process stuff. All of the fun stuff is in the manual. So the resolution that's attached in item three adopts the manual. And that's really where the meat is. So there's education about low-impact development in the manual. There are all of the development standards and all of the incentives. It's designed to be a menu approach, right? So there are 15 site design BMPs, there are nine stormwater BMPs. The proposal is that a landowner or developer would have to pick at least six BMPs to create this holistic low-impact development and be eligible for incentives. And I'll explain that in a little bit more detail. And then there are 15 incentives. So what are the site design BMPs? And remember, if you're thinking back to that three-step process, those site design BMPs are really the avoid and minimize. So how do you design around the natural features of the site? And how do you minimize the amount of runoff that would be generated? So a couple of examples of that is maintaining the natural topography of the site or preserving floodplain in excess of what is required by ordinance now or minimizing total impervious surface area. So the manual describes each of these BMPs in some detail. Like what does it mean to maintain natural topography? How much of the natural topography would you maintain in order to be eligible? All of those details are in the manual. And then, here are the stormwater BMPs. And, oh, let me go back one, sorry. So under the plan that we've developed, the landowner would have to pick four of these site design BMPs. So they would pick four of the avoid and minimize options. And then once the stormwater volume is known, then pick two of the stormwater BMPs. That is the mitigate portion. And so here are some examples of the stormwater BMPs. It could be wet pond or dry pond, depending on your site conditions. Could be using vegetated swales or rain gardens. So we would ask that the project have a minimum of two of these BMPs. It's a lot of information. So what we've tried to do to help folks is to create this BMP table. I know for instance, this is super hard to read. It is in the agenda item in a way that people can read it. But I wanted to give an example of what this BMP table looks like. So I chose the BMP to maintain natural topography. So in the table, we provide, if we can, an example or a graphic that depicts what that BMP is. There's a little description. It lists all the incentives that are available for that BMP. And then it gives the details of the requirements to gain those incentives. And so, let's just talk about this one for a minute. So for maintaining natural topography, there are a couple of options we've identified. One is you could maintain the natural topography, that means no grading, for at least 30% of the site. And that area would then be preserved through a conservation easement and all development rights would be severed in that area. So you would have 70% of the site to do all of the other things for the development. Another option would be, if it's a subdivision, to require that all of the primary structures within the subdivision be an alternative construction like stem wall or pier construction to minimize the amount of fill that has to come onto that site. So if you're a developer and you, you say, yep, you know what? I think stem wall construction makes a lot of sense for this subdivision. You can choose option B. It lists all of the incentives that you would be able to get for that option. The other thing we did in this table, because we're asking people to pick a menu, and it's a little bit à la carte, but we also say you have to pick a certain number of things, right? So you're not just picking french fries and getting incentive, right? You have to pick the whole meal to get the incentives. We added this section about which other BMPs work really well with this one. So for instance, if you're going to choose this BMP to maintain natural topography, that works really well with the BMP that says, I'm going to retain extra tree canopy and native vegetation on my site. They work really well together. So we've tried to make it so that a project developer or a property owner can really use this to help them create a really great project. So, let's talk a little bit about the incentives. This is the list of all of the incentives that are included. I highlighted additional density because that's the one that the PLDRC had objection to. Again, the manual details what each of these means. So what does flexible lot size mean? Or what does flexible building setback mean? A couple of examples that we know from our conversations with the development community are important. One, I think, that can't be overstated is the allowing these things by right, which eliminates process, doesn't necessarily change the standard. Although if you use the BMPs, you get to use that standard. But just the fact that you don't have to get a waiver or you don't have to get a variance is impactful. Some of the things where you see the BMP can be permitted with landscape islands or it can be credited as open space, those are things that we heard that developers would take advantage of if they did the right BMPs. Because, so for instance, if you're doing a vegetated swale, it makes sense that that could be in your landscaping area because it's vegetated. Right now, stormwater isn't permitted in those areas because the typical stormwater pond is an open water area. That doesn't jive with your landscape buffer. But if you're using these LID alternatives, in some cases, those can overlap. So we can talk as much as you want about specific incentives. But this is basically the list. And again, to try to make it a little bit easier to digest, we've created this matrix that lists all of the incentives along that first column. Or, I'm sorry, all of the BMPs in the first column. And then across the top are the incentives that are available for that BMP. And again, you're picking six, at least six. And so you, you could stack those incentives. I will point out that density, which was a concern for the PLDRC, is really only an incentive on some of the BMPs that are the most impactful. So preserving the floodplain or reducing the pervious surf, total pervious surface allowable to less than 50% of the site. So we tried to be deliberate about which incentives made sense with which BMPs. All right, so I kind of wanted to do an example if, if I'm a developer, right? So I decided I'm a developer and I'm planning a new residential subdivision. And I want to use this low-impact development program. So, you know, I start my project and the first thing I do is an inventory of all of the site features. And, and there was a comment about we should require people to tell us where the wetlands are when they come in. We, we definitely do that now. All projects have to have, if there are wetlands on-site, we need the delineation. We need to know where the buffers are. We need to know if there are protected species on the site. We need to know where the floodplain is. That's happening now for all commercial and residential development. So I start my project and I get all of that information. And I see, hey, I've got a lot of floodplain on my site. I have some that's not floodplain. So the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to choose the BMP that says I'm going to preserve all of the floodplain on my site. And if my, that equals at least 30%, I'm good, I can use that BMP. So I'm going to start there. And then I'm going to retain a larger natural landscape buffer along all of the property boundaries. So I'm creating this exterior boundary that's natural and bigger than is currently required in the code. So that makes sense. And then I'm going to cluster my subdivision on the remaining 70% of that site. So I've got my 30% that's protected as floodplain and a conservation easement can never be developed on. I'm going to put the rest of my subdivision clustered up on the 70%. And then I think I'm going to create an internal multi-use trail system that connects off-site to a larger trail network. So I now have my four site design BMPs. And I now know what my stormwater calculations are. I know how much stormwater I have to attenuate. And so to do that, I'm going to pick the BMP that says I'm going to do a wet pond because that makes sense on my site. The requirement has a little bit of additional storage. And it's going to require pretreatment for water quality and be planted with native vegetation. So that's my first stormwater BMP. And then I'm going to utilize multiple rain gardens across my site to distribute that stormwater across the site, which makes my pond volume a little smaller because I've got volume in other areas. And now I have my two stormwater BMPs, so I have my six things. And here are the incentives that I would now be eligible for based on those six things. Now, I want to say that not every project is going to need all, need or want all of these incentives. I might not need my BMPs to be common open space, but I could do that if I need to. So here are the incentives I would be eligible for. You with me? Okay. So, that was a lot. But we have identified a few options, and these are not the only options you have by any means. So one option would be to adopt the two ordinances in the resolution as recommended to the PLDRC with no changes and based on your prior direction for an entirely voluntary program. Option two is you can consider the PLDRC's recommendation to eliminate that density bonus incentive and approve the rest. Option three, there are actually more than one here, right? If, if you're inclined to look at either a hybrid approach where some items are mandatory or a fully mandatory program, then you could either adopt this voluntary program today or move it to the next step, right? Because we talked about two readings and state review. But we could move forward with this and you could direct us to look at strengthening it in the future. Or you could direct us to take it back, revise it, and come back. So, if you have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. That was, that was a lot. You did a good job getting through years of discussions and meetings and study. Just going to let the, the public know, again, the, the process for this. We've heard the presentation. I'm going to open it up to the council for questions. And then we'll open it up to you for your comments. And I'm going to ask you, there's two items, two and three. I've got 10 people that want to speak on item two. If you had signed up to speak on item three, please consider... please consider doing it now so we can get all the comments out of the way and the council can hear it. And then we can, because we're gonna vote on both of them separately. But it's really probably the same comments on either one. If you don't want to do that, you're not gonna be prohibited. If you wanna speak on item two and item three, you'll get that opportunity. But it probably makes a lot of sense to get all the public comments in before we debate. Because if item two doesn't go, item three's not gonna go and vice versa. So I hope that's, I hope that made sense. Not prevented from speaking on both, but I'm encouraging you to make your comments on this, on item two that we're dealing with now. And the comments need to be directed just to the low-impact development ordinances on two and three. Okay, for questions for staff, Councilman Johansson.
Yes, sir, that's for Mr. Santiago.
Okay. David Santiago, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To staff, question. Can you tell us, to what size of a project is this applicable to? Do we have like a minimum that this would apply to? Could it be a small lot subdivision this would be applicable to also? Are there standards around that?
We haven't developed a minimum size that would be eligible for the project. It would just have to be large enough. There's no ordinance requirement for size, but in practicality, it would have to be large enough that you could implement these BMPs and benefit from any of the incentives.
Understood, thank you. And just one more question. One of the recommendations you said from the NREC committee was to eliminate the density bonuses. Can you give some insight as to what was the discussion around that and the thought process coming to that decision and why?
Sure, so that was the PLDRC recommendation. And the discussion at the meeting was about the fact that every new unit generates reclaimed water, right? So they take water into the, the discussion was mostly about residential, right? So you take water into the home, you generate reclaimed water. The chair of the PLDRC was concerned that generating the reclaimed water and then storing that reclaimed water, whether on that development or, you know, back at the wastewater treatment plant, might elevate the groundwater table, which would further the flooding problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Councilman Robbins.
Thank you, Chairman. Don't try, sorry. Ms. Adair, thank you for your presentation. It was a lot to take in in such a short amount of time. Real quick, how many takers have we had in the past here that took advantage of the density bonuses?
For the conservation subdivisions. So that's the only thing we have right now that allows density bonus. And again, they're only allowed in the environmental core overlay or directly adjacent. We have one project that has actually chosen to be a conservation subdivision. That's partly why we're proposing to allow that in other urban residential classifications.
Right, okay. My other question, because I'm sitting here taking this in, it popped in my head. We have residents, Ms. Adair, that are complaining about sitting water on their properties and having it stage up there obviously before it leaves. Everywhere I've looked, whether it's EPA.gov, any of the sites when you research LID, your presentation, it appears everything that's being showed with LID keeps that same water people are complaining about on their property staging longer. My question is, by making this mandatory, in your professional opinion, how will that, how will this, how will that making it mandatory make water not stage up on your property as that's the number one complaint of our citizens if we make this mandatory? How will it alleviate the water getting off the property?
Right, so some of the LID practices like vegetated swales or rain gardens would have that BMP on the property. Sometimes those are in the public right-of-way. So if they're designed correctly, then the water is in the place that it's intended to be, not up in the rest of your yard or in your house. I will say to the mandatory question, there's no one design that fits every project, right? And there are some projects that I think are really well-suited to doing all of the low-impact development things. I think that all projects could do some low-impact development things. So when you're looking at talking about mandatory, you know, there may be some really good logic to, some things are required and some things are optional. If you have a site where the best answer for your stormwater is a pond that's, you know, separate from all of the lots, then I, you know, I don't think that any of us want to exacerbate a problem. But, you know, also in my experience, things that aren't required don't necessarily get utilized, like your example of conservation subdivisions.
And I understand that and that's why I asked that specific question. So what I'm hearing is even if we require it, that water's still gonna, what, my point is that water's still gonna stage up and possibly hold more on people's property. The exact reason why we're here today.
Well, I think, you know, think about it in the three-part system, right? And so the first two parts of low-impact development are minimizing your impact, or minimizing your impact, right? So I think all developments can benefit from those things. When you get to the end where you're mitigating, where you're saying, this is the stormwater I have to attenuate and I need to find the best way to do that, you know, that's where you don't wanna stifle that by making something required. But if you required all developments to do the avoid and minimize or some number of those, that's a good thing, right? That's not staging up on someone's property. That's saying, we're just gonna produce less stormwater by the way we design the site.
Okay. Couple more questions. Sorry. In one of the last presentations a few meetings ago, Mr. Bartlett and several others, they explained to us where the flooding is happening. Closed basins by water, you know, a lake by the St. Johns or by the intercoastal and sometimes in the floodplains. With that being said, obviously the amount of water has something to do with obviously the flooding. By making these mandatory, knowing what we know and what we've been told in the past here, how will, how will it, how will making LID mandatory alleviate where we know the problems are already?
Again, I think the answer is the, you know, the things that maybe could be mandatory are the things that are the site design elements. The, don't build in the floodplain. Identify the floodplain and then don't put your infrastructure there. How do you minimize the amount of stormwater you create? And maybe in basins that are constrained, the way you handle the stormwater, the way you meet that attenuation requirement, the way you mitigate step three, you know, that doesn't necessarily have to be mandatory. I mean, it's all, of course, up to your discretion. As much or as little can be mandatory as you direct. But the site design things, the how do we reduce the amount that we create? How do we reduce the amount of impervious surface? How do we just create less stormwater? I think those are things that can happen in any basin.
Okay. And lastly, I promised the last one. I did some research and I've only noticed two counties in the whole state of Florida, out of sixty-seven counties have mandated some of these practices. I think it was Alachua and Pinellas. Why is that?
Well, you know, I certainly don't wanna crystal ball what other elected bodies do. I think that because this is something that hasn't been required in the past, there is a certain amount of, no one wants to be an early adopter. I think Alachua County, they do have requirements and what they've seen is that people are meeting the requirement. The city of Doral in South Florida also has a mandatory LID. But most local governments that have LID, it's a voluntary program.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Johansson.
That's really me this time. Thank you, Chairman. Ginger, do we have in the county or in the cities, do we have an area that's incorporated some LID or will incorporate LID?
Yes, we have certain projects that have elements of LID. We, to my knowledge, at least in the county, don't have any projects that are sort of fully low-impact development. We do have some folks that are out there saying they would like to do this and they want us to at least remove the barriers that I talked about so that they can do some elements of this. So I think there's an appetite for some folks to do some of these, but we don't have any, like, one big LID development in our county.
You know, one of the things I hear up here in my previous job is, don't, too much density, too much density. So you wanna allow people to cluster. And people don't see, in my opinion, people don't see the two thousand acres that you've preserved, conserved, or otherwise aren't building on. All they see is you got five hundred acres and you're putting eight thousand homes in there. And to them, that's increased density. How do we inform the public that this is part of a bigger project that's really doing great things or better things than what they could be doing? Sometimes you hear, you hear the lawyers come up and say, "We're incorporating this over here to save this over here." And the public doesn't wanna hear that. All they wanna hear is it's, you're putting too much density in a small area. How do we, how do we overcome that going forward?
It's a challenge. We've been having seminars and public outreach about low-impact development for a number of years, going back to twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So in environmental management, we do have a large education component and we try to preach these things. I know there have been other groups that have had low-impact development conferences. There's an annual one down in Befard County. V-CARD has done low-impact development conferences. So, you know, I think with anything, educating the public is always a challenge and we try to do that as much as we can on an individual basis when we're talking to developers or, you know, concerned citizens, but also sort of more publicly in the outreach that we do.
How, how hard is it gonna be? I think Dr. Anderson mentioned a few things in previous meetings and touched on it a little bit earlier about people growing gardens and swales and stuff, not LID current. And here we are talking about swales and rain gardens and things, not in the right-of-way, but in their property. So what happens when Kristen and Jay Johansson move into their new house and they go, "I want that stinking thing there." And we, you know, capitalize on the, "I can have a garden in my front yard plan and grow some corn or some tomatoes out there in that beautiful place that's supposed to be used for rainwater." Is that a code enforcement issue at that point? How do we, how do we control that?
It is a code enforcement issue, but I think the, I don't know that control may be the right word. I think we set ourselves up for success by having the BMPs that require, say, maintenance, right? If you're relying on a vegetated swale to contain part of the volume, then to the extent possible, those things need to be on the tracks within a subdivision that are controlled by the HOA.
HOA.
And reduce as much as possible the parts that are on private property. We know that that's an enforcement problem throughout the years, right? Because you may move into that house and have all of the best intentions, but the next buyer doesn't even know.
Right.
And so I think we have to be really intentional about where things are on the property. This works, I think, well on commercial sites as well, right? Because those are, you know, they have a landscape crew. The owner is in charge of making sure that these things stay. So in subdivisions, I think it's about really being deliberate about what things are on lots. We know that's tough to enforce. And I don't think we set ourselves up for success if we think that homeowners are gonna maintain that swale in their front yard.
Got it. You know, I've been in a couple of states throughout the nation here and xeriscaping is, well, in Arizona it is because they don't have water. But it benefits flood-prone areas as well. You know, we could probably benefit from sucking it up a little bit and not having a green lawn or not irrigating or using rain barrels and cisterns. Probably makes your subdivision look a little uglier. Is that, is that on our, is that on our vision of the future? Or do we wait till it's, "Oh, my God, look, and we gotta do it now"? Or do we look ahead and think about doing it now, not later?
It is on our radar, particularly the things about irrigation. It's on the NREC work plan. Right now, the work plan is stormwater changes to chapter fifty minimum standards. Then we're looking at floodplain implications. And then we have sort of third, although things blend together quite a bit, is looking at, are irrigation practices appropriate for flood control? You know, should we limit, for instance, the amount of irrigation in backyards? That's something some counties are doing. So, you know, are landscape standards appropriate? All of that is on the work plan. It's just a matter of three hours a month to talk to everybody.
And if, you know, regardless of what happens tonight, if, well, not regardless, if things don't go well for LID tonight, is there any option to, to pick one project and make it a beta and say that, this subdivision, whatever it is, "I'll pick Venetian Bay because we've talked about it, even though it sounds like things are slowing down there a little bit." And say, "This two hundred home subdivision, we're gonna subsidize LID. We're gonna do everything that works for that area." And watch it and see if it works. See what does work, see what doesn't work. Or, you know, I just, I like the idea. I just don't know if it's gonna work. People tell me it's gonna work. The book says it's gonna work. It works in some places because they're doing some of it. But does it work in Florida? We don't know. Doral, is it working? Alachua, is it working? And I think, we're not in debate yet, but I think education's gonna be the key. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Adair, how long has the county had conservation subdivisions in our code?
Six years, seven years. I don't have the date.
How many conservation subdivisions do we have?
Oh, two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, so longer than I thought. We have one that's under construction right now. The only.
So only one, it's not done, it's just being constructed right now. But it's been in our code since oh-six. Is that right?
I'm not entirely sure when it was adopted, but we'll get right back to you.
Nineteen years, one subdivision currently. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, we're gonna move to, we're gonna hear from the public. I've put everybody together for two and three. If you, I'll look at them carefully. If you are signed up for number three, I'll give you the option to speak now or to come back. Again, I would encourage you, let's just, let's just do it and, because it's all the same subject. John Nicholson, you're signed up for two and three. Can you do it all in one?
Just to spite you, I would do separate ones, but no. John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. My preference would be option one. And yes, vote for two and three. Jack White, forty years ago, was preaching to the city of Daytona Beach to do this, alright? He wanted pods to create areas throughout our city. So instead of people having everybody to drive into downtown for something they needed to drive. they needed to drive to their local areas. And so they had little pods with downtown condos, townhouses, apartments altogether, and then suburbia around it. So you had a complete city within a city, all right? That's, in essence, what they're doing here. What they want to do is preserve the natural environment. I don't know how many of you remember the clear cut, what was it called, Levitt Town in New York? They literally wiped out every single city, I mean, every single tree. And then every lot was the same size, every house was the same house. In Miami that my parents moved into was Mackel Brothers. Again, leveled every single tree, every house looked, well, actually, there were three designs. You had one of three and that was it. And it was one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, throughout the entire community. This concept of clustering saves like 30%, 40%, 50%, depending on the project. The project from Miami Corporation in Edgewater is huge. They're saving 57,000 acres that we don't have to buy with Volusia Forever funds. They're giving to us for free. So in our city, we have another almost 50,000 acres given for conservation that we don't have to buy with Volusia Forever funds. So how much is 100,000, 200,000 acres worth on the market today? This is a tremendous gift. This concept is tremendous. Because how many of us would like to live in Don's neighborhood? Or Danny's neighborhood? Or Jeff's neighborhood? Where their trees abound everywhere? You don't have your cookie cutter houses. You're driving through a forest to get to your house. It is a great concept, plus the idea that we end up with all this free land. And free is a good price, especially for the future. Thank you.
Nicole Burgess.
Hello, Nicole Burgess, Daytona Beach. Since we're here to discuss low-impact development, I think it's reasonable to presume that we all agree LID strategies can be part of our integral plan to make our county successful. Of the 26 strategies studied by EnRAC, I'm asking you to make three mandatory. Maintaining natural topography, preserving the floodplain, and retaining the tree canopy and native landscaping. Most of us can probably agree that optional things don't get done. This morning, I was at the tax collector's office because my annual vehicle registration is obligatory. On the other hand, many people don't floss their teeth as often as the dentists recommend because there's no such thing as floss police. Sometimes leadership requires mandates. Despite the fact that voluntary strategies have been available in Volusia for almost 20 years, incentivized LID programs in Florida consistently fail because developers can still opt out. Your collective authority to establish consistent implementation across the county can improve resilience, protect our ecosystems, and reduce long-term infrastructure costs. Please continue to show us that you're taking action. It's intuitive that flood mitigation with mandatory LID will also have secondary benefits on the affordable housing measures that have been brought to the council as well. Many of the homes in the county that are flood-prone are the most affordable. And those of us who've had lengthy displacements further strain the regional housing supply. I have been reluctant to discuss my role as the co-chair of the Faith Flooding Community because I know that during individual meetings with council members, I've received feedback that faith has been perceived as adversarial. I personally apologize for that. And I'm personally inviting each of you to join us for the Action Assembly on April 1st at 6:30, where we will be discussing flooding and affordable housing. I listen, I will listen to each of you and mobilize our 34 congregations and 1,400 individuals on your behalf as the Volusia County Council to help get things done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next we have Catherine Pantay. You are signed up for two and three. Do you want to speak on both items? This is, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council. I request rejection of Agenda Items Two and Three for the following reason. Unless certain items are stricken. Currently, developers already have an option to use low-impact development and none of them do. Why would we create an ordinance that doesn't make it mandatory for all development to use LID in every development? Voluntary needs to be stricken as well as any and all incentives. We do not need to give incentives for what they should be doing. In addition, as written, it would also give industrial properties zoned I-2 a 10% increase in floor space if they call it LID. This needs to be removed, especially in light of a 20 million gallon fuel terminal looming in the background. Neither industrial nor commercial should receive an incentive. Further, these changes do not need to be sent back to EnRAC as that would take many more months to complete. Council can direct staff to make these simple changes quickly. Look at Page 313A. This allows the DRC Development Review Committee, which is stacked with development interest, to nullify LID requirements if a developer complains it is not fair and equitable. What does this even mean here? This gives developers a way out of using LID. Why would we give them an out if we are truly trying to implement LID in our county? In reference to the grants, all residents pay for them via federal tax dollars. However, you have to meet a certain income threshold to even get one. The majority of middle-class residents are ineligible, especially in two-income households. These residents are going bankrupt after flooding repeatedly. In essence, all residents are paying for grants that only some are able to qualify for. Staff presentations. I'm going to copy the words of Councilwoman Santiago. They are repetitive. While some information is useful, the majority is useless. It appears they are long and drawn out to wear the public down so they get frustrated and leave. Even some of you are dozing off. The residents of this county work and it takes a lot for them to be here. So please cut the fat so the public's time is not wasted. Lastly, the county owns the Ocean Center. When we have a special meeting, the Ocean Center needs to be utilized so that all the residents are in one room. This is so we can all hear good sound quality as well as be comfortable. The overflow in Deland has poor sound quality and the echo is very uncomfortable for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary Singleton. You signed up for three. Would you speak now or do you want to wait to another?
That was an accident.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Wendy Anderson. You will be followed by Suzanne Shiber. Suzanne will be followed by Pat Jocelyn.
Thank you. I agree with everything Kat Pant just said. My name is Dr. Wendy Anderson. I live in Deland. I am an academic environmental scientist serving on the EnRAC. For 15 years, I have been teaching the principles of low-impact development in my university courses and promoting low-impact development as a toolkit for smart growth in the communities I've lived in. I often say LID principles encompass everything. Stormwater management, pollution control, wetlands protection, floodplain hazard mitigation, tree protection, water-wise landscaping, and wildlife habitat protection. And yet, EnRAC is sending you this as a new standalone LID ordinance, plus a set of, you know, the stormwater ordinances we already discussed, as separate things. Later this spring, EnRAC will continue its work to review ordinances for wetlands, floodplains, et cetera, keeping those issues in their silos rather than tackling them under a comprehensive LID umbrella. I am not in favor of the LID ordinance as it has been presented to you. First, an ordinance is an order. Ordinance, order, okay? A decree, a law. An ordinance is by its very definition mandatory. What is the point of having an ordinance that is entirely voluntary? And not just voluntary, but actually gives away incentives like increased density or discounts on fees just for choosing to do the right thing. On January 14th, you all collectively acknowledged that repeated catastrophic flooding across this county and chronic flooding in some areas is real and has impacted thousands of our residences. You said that the ordinance language that EnRAC was developing on your behalf would begin to provide solutions, at least for future building, that would create, that would not create more flooding for more areas in the future. I sat out here and nodded my head no because I knew what EnRAC was bringing you was only a voluntary ordinance. I begged once again in our EnRAC meeting last week for us to offer an ordinance with more teeth, to return to the hybrid LID model that we originally agreed to propose before both you and we were constrained temporarily by Senate Bill 250, which we were released from more than a year ago. I'm going to jump to my recommendation. Here's what I think you should do. LID is a large, rich toolbox of stormwater mitigation and water pollution reduction. Every development should use it, but they don't have to use all of the pieces. It's not appropriate to use all the pieces in all the places. We should maintain the drop-down menu options, but make it mandatory for every development to use some of them. I also suggest that we just send it back to staff, to Samantha West, who's brilliant, have her adjust the language, and move forward. I don't think EnRAC needs to see it again. We have other things to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Shiber, followed by Pat Jocelyn, followed by John Garrick.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Shiber with Green Volusia. Low-impact development serves as the foundation for a system of beliefs and stormwater principles. This system includes stormwater, floodplains, wetlands, landscaping, trees, and permeable materials. What is important is that low-impact development is not changed to become something else. So what do I mean by that? The concept was created to help preserve natural perviousness and pollutant treatment by soil by maximizing the contact time between stormwater and soil as close to the original source as possible. They did not say, "Let us increase the density or floor size of the development" when we create the tools for achieving the stormwater principles. Volusia County cannot claim forward-thinking, pioneering, or innovation by offering incentives of such magnitude. We support low-impact development as required. We do not support incentives to do the right thing. Just do the right thing. Forward-thinking leadership doesn't need incentives. Developers stood up in this chamber during the moratorium meeting and expressed opposition to a temporary stop bill that is impacting them economically. Flood victims were hurt economically across this county and are still hurting. Where's the economic balance? We need whole new ways of thinking to impact change. Where's the hybrid approach? Why didn't EnRAC go back to that idea since that was what they wanted in the beginning? Senate Bill 250 ended, and when it did, that opened the door for the hybrid discussion to continue. We support required low-impact development and a hybrid approach. Please send the ordinance to staff to complete the hybrid approach and required. Please let EnRAC continue to work on the rest of the LID principles that are missing. Those are floodplains, wetlands, landscapes, trees, and permeable materials. And yes, I repeated that twice. Please bring back the seven items from the January 14th meeting to move forward. No more building on wetlands. Do not allow developers to pay into wetland mitigation banks. Require all county and city canals to be cleaned and maintained. Put a plan in place to purchase low-lying land and homes that consistently flood. Utilize the county-owned land for retention ponds near flood-prone areas where appropriate. Speak with cities regarding apartment complexes. Stop raising the land higher with filter, which causes the neighbors to flood. This would be forward-thinking leadership. This would create economic balance. I agree with Wendy Anderson. Voluntary does not need an ordinance. Thank you.
Pat Jocelyn, followed by John Garrick.
Pat Jocelyn, Taylor Road, Deland, Florida. I agree with these ladies. They've said a whole lot more than I want to say. I just want to say it needs to be mandatory. I agree with Wendy. Ordinance, the definition of it is order, and you guys need to order. Thank you.
Thank you, John Garrick. John's still in the room. Pat Phillips. Connie Colby. Okay. And so did John Garrick, not here. Going once, going twice. Pam Phillips. Going once, going twice. Connie Colby is gone. Sarah Lee Morrissey. And you were also signed up to speak twice, two and three.
I would love to speak once.
Okay, good.
Sarah Lee Morrissey, District 2, Daytona Beach. I am here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Volusia County, and I am also an EnRAC Advisory Board member. And with regard to LID, the League of Women Voters is very supportive of bold and creative strategies and encourages the council to utilize such strategies to address development concerns as well as stormwater issues. In that regard, the League of Women Voters would have preferred a hybrid approach as opposed to an entirely voluntary approach. As an EnRAC board member, I would like to remind council that our initial recommendation was to do something hybrid. However, due to issues already brought up, we put forward what I think is a very strong, creative approach to voluntary. And that is through the use of incentives. I think that if council wants to pursue LID, it should come back to EnRAC. And the reason I think it should come back to EnRAC is because you have a very diverse group of citizens who are very well-informed, well-intentioned, and offer different points of view, some of which we've heard tonight. And I think, as you all know, sitting up here, week after week, and listening to a myriad of different issues, there's always different things to consider. And so I think it's important that if you want to move forward with something other than voluntary, that you have a good airing of that by a well-informed, well-intentioned advisory committee. And that group would be EnRAC. And respectfully, I appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Michael Woods.
Good evening. Michael Woods, 231 North Willsam Boulevard, in support of the proposed ordinance. I didn't necessarily think I would get up and speak. I've spoken on this issue with specific projects in the past about just trying to get out of the way to try to do something a little bit better. I don't know that I could tell you that everything is perfect with the provisions as provided. I think staff is anticipating that so they can come back and adjust the guidelines as they move forward. What I would say is that it's better to have something better than nothing at all. And I would tell you that one of the things that I think Commissioner Kent was bringing up was the conservation subdivisions not really being utilized. It's because the conditions that are required are pretty much all or nothing, and there's not that many locations by which we can utilize that. Here with the LID standards, again, you guys can talk through about mandatory or in the future, but at least testing the process to make sure that it can work and can make it function. I know I have projects that have wanted to do the conservation subdivisions before but couldn't because of proximity to Echo or something else. I know that I have projects that are interested in doing the LID. The biggest issue we've had in the past, and I think I've talked here, is the stormwater ponds needing to have a little bit more elbow room and space and the conflict that that causes with the existing code provisions. So even if you're not getting into incentivization, just allowing to take away the siloing of the different regulations to try to make a better project together, that's what I see the LID standards as being able to bring forward. And at least give you a target for folks to hit. And for instance, we talked about how you can't rely upon the individual lots to be able to maintain the swales or whatnot. There's a provision in at least one of the versions of the draft language that wanted to have limitations on the vegetation and soil. Now, the likelihood is some subdivisions may be encouraged to not use St. Augustine. I think we've kind of moved past most of that, but some may want to. And you wouldn't get credit if you did that. But you could still have the commercial or the common space meet the requirements. And there's nothing in these guidelines that prevents you from doing that. You may not get full credit, you may not get any credit. But it's targeted there to say, "Hey, we think this is important. So to the extent that is possible, try to reduce your reliance upon non-native, you know, heavy water consumption plantings." I think what we're just trying to do is rethink how we're going forward with our development, with our projects. We've been having this conversation well before our flooding issues came forward. There's a better way to design and have a product that we are more happy with. There's a better way to design and have a product that we are more happy with at the end, and I think this is a good first step. It's going to take a little bit of give and take, a couple of guinea pigs, a couple of beta projects to try it and see, but I think it's worth doing and trying, and I appreciate you guys considering this tonight.
Thank you. And there is one more speaker, Melissa Lammers, Chairman of EnRAC.
Good evening, Melissa Lammers, District 4, Ormond by the Sea. I'm going to take a hybrid approach. I'm going to report a little as EnRAC, and I'm going to give opinions as Melissa, in all fairness, since I didn't clear my comments with my colleagues. I just want to reiterate what's already been said. EnRAC came up originally with a hybrid approach because we believed collectively, we don't all have hive mind, we believed collectively that that had the greatest chance of success and of being that kind of a beta test, and we thought it was fair. You could choose, you had some requirements of LID, and then you could choose to do more and have incentives with it. When it was brought to you in October of 2023, thanks to preemptive legislation out of Tallahassee, you couldn't approve it. And yes, a lot of time has gone by since then, and we've worked on other things, including working hard, and staff really did a super-heavy lift on this, working to follow your direction to us to come back with a voluntary approach, because that was what legally you thought you could do at the time. So that's what we worked on. I personally would like to see us revert to the hybrid approach. I still think it was fair. I cannot speak for the entire committee for that, but I think we do need to require some low-impact development. Low-impact development gets us around or helps us with the issue that you've heard repeated tonight, which is siloed solutions. LID is much more holistic than it is siloed. It encompasses many of the other things that we're going to deal with, and I like that. Same thing with GSI. Both of these things utilize nature to work in our service or mimic nature to work in our service. Some of these techniques can even be used for retrofit, and that's relevant to the current flooding issues, not all of them. Another reason that we chose the hybrid approach was because we recognized collectively, I'm reporting again, that we didn't think every single development could go 100% low-impact development, but we did believe that every single development could employ several low-impact development techniques. That's why we did that that way. And while it's important to note that low-impact development assists with quantities of water on a property, it can also help with the flip side of the coin, the other problem we have, which is not enough water being returned to the aquifer and returning it in a clean state. Low-impact development helps with that as well. The PLDRC recommended that you consider reverting to the hybrid. Okay, thank you. Could I say one little bit more? No.
Thank you. Okay, and that is the end of public participation on Items 2 and 3. I just, I wanted to open up and by telling the EnRAC committee, several of you are here, you're the chair, and to the county staff. We've worked on this for four years, the four years that I've been here. I've seen county staff go to the LID conferences in Rockledge. We worked with the Central Florida Planning Board and had a large inclusive, from all over the county, conference on it. EnRAC has done tremendous work on this, and you hung with it. But it's true. You said, Dr. Anderson said, we tied your hands with it. So you did the best you could with what we gave you because of Senate Bill 250, which is now not in the way. Originally, you wanted a hybrid system. That, we had to tell you no because of Senate Bill 250. So now you have given us the best you could, a system that is heavily dependent on incentives because it's the only way to get it to work. It's the only way anybody's going to do it. Even the manual that you all produced is incredible. It's a very valuable manual, but even the manual is, it's incentive-driven, almost everything in it, and it had to be if it was completely voluntary. I would like to see this council take bold action. We promised the public in the previous meeting, when we came up with the seven solutions that we gave to staff. This is not one of those seven, but it interplays with almost all of them. It's not a magic bullet, it's not a silver bullet, but it will go a long way to solving our long-term flooding issues. And besides that, it returns, one of the beauties of low-impact development is that it returns the water to the aquifer, to the river, to the Tamoka, to the Indian River Lagoon, to the ocean, wherever it's going, in a better condition than our stormwater system does now. It doesn't stack up water. It holds water where it needs to be on a property so that it can percolate and be filtered into the aquifer, where trees and vegetation can transpire it and send it back to the atmosphere. That's not stacking, that's treatment of water without a water treatment plant. It's one of the beautiful things of low-impact development. So I would like to see this council take bold action and make low-impact development, we probably should call it sponge development, because that's what it is. It's a development that holds its own water and releases it slowly to the environment, and that we should make it mandatory. Here's why. A mandatory system isn't putting a gun to anybody's head. One of the speakers said it, not every principle will be used on every property. It can't. Not every property will choose to do permeable pavers. They might not need to. Not every property would have cutouts on the curbs. You don't have to do everything, but you do have to do the things that would apply to that property to make it, to make LID work and to preserve water. What LID will do, again, this is a future thing, it will reduce flooding all over Volusia County. We need to be early adopters. Yeah, Alachua County is doing it, Sarasota is doing it, the City of Sebastian is doing it. An 18,000-acre low-impact development facility is already in place, Babcock Ranch, so it works. There should be no incentives, certainly no financial incentives to, that everybody else has to pay in permit fees. If you want to talk about incentives for, no density incentives and certainly no square footage for I-2, if we want to talk about allowing, if somebody does LID that their stormwater system applies to open space, that's just a given. The incentives are self-apparent. We reduce the destruction that we're now seeing all over the county. What better incentive can we see than that? And I've got a couple other things that I will come back to you with Jake Johansson.
Yes, sir, that's for David?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jake. Mr. Chairman, I missed getting in queue with the last question, to get a last question into staff. If you'd give me some latitude, I just have one question for staff, and then I can go into my debate, if that's okay?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Is, I want to make sure, whatever decision we make here today, if we approve this in whatever format or don't approve it, whichever way it goes, is it a safe statement to say, or can you answer this, I'll put it better? If we had low-impact development to its fullest extent in all of the subdivisions in the county five years ago, would the people that are sitting in this room not have flooded?
I don't think, I don't think that that's safe to say. I think that, like the ordinance we talked about earlier, this would, well, let me see if I have that right. So it would affect future development if it was adopted now. Had it been adopted five years ago, would it prevent flooding? I think the answer is not necessarily. If the design storm for whatever your stormwater system is, is a 25-year design storm in an open basin and a 100-year design storm in a closed basin, and you have a 500-year storm, this doesn't solve that problem, right? It would prevent flooding at that design storm, but it wouldn't prevent a catastrophic event. Nothing in any of this would capture all of that rainwater in those catastrophic events.
So to clarify, because again, I don't want to give the message inaccurately. The people that are sitting in the audience today that flooded, you know, within the last storm, this would not have made any difference to them? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know that I would say wouldn't have made any difference, but what I'm saying is that regardless of what practices you use, whether you use a distributed stormwater system like low-impact development, if your design storm is a 25-year storm and you get a 500-year storm, there's just not the storage capacity built in.
I think I know where you're going, but I need a very much more clearer answer to that. And what I mean by that is today's standard, what we are adopting right now, if we adopted everything that was here today, and that was in place 12 months, I'll just say 12 months ago, would this have prevented those individual homes from having the damage they've had to their property?
Hi, David, it's Tad Kaysbeer, County Engineer. Nothing in the LID at this point changes the design storm. It still, it keeps therefore the same amount of water that would need to be held back in the post-condition consistent with the pre. It would change where that water is located. The effect that it could potentially have is on the later stages, the groundwater now being spread out as opposed to localized in one location. But that would depend greatly on where the pond is located on the site and where the different improvements would be to really make a true comparison. But in those closed basins, as was said in the previous, it's the same amount of water, whether it's groundwater or surface water, it's going to go to the low spot. It just changes the time at which it takes to get there. In a big closed basin, it'll take a lot longer, so it would be a positive. If it's in a small closed basin, which most of them are on the Deland Ridge, it's not going to have that great of an effect. That's about.
Thank you. I know it was a tough question, and I didn't mean to beat up on that, but, you know, there's statements that are being made that this would prevent the flooding that happened. I don't want those people to leave this room thinking that if we had done this, because some have accused us of failing, if we had done this a year or two ago, it's probably safe to say, it's unfortunate, but we'd be in the same position with the homes that were affected. Mr. Chairman, I'll shift to debate, and thank you, staff. Firstly, let me also say that there's some standards in here that I like. I have no issues with them, and I can see myself supporting these. I like the hybrid version. However, I would like for staff to come back to us with some of these more flexibility and options. I don't know those options right now and how I would package them, but I think some more thought process can be given to us on how we can play these options to require. And I'm okay with saying some of these may be mandatory. I could possibly live with that. I don't know quite yet, but I think the hybrid version is a good one, and certainly I could support some of these, but again, I'll repeat that I don't want to give the message, at least from myself, that this is going to save anyone from flooding or would have prevented people from flooding in the past. It sounds like what staff is saying, that this could mitigate some of that, slow it down, but not have prevented what occurred in the amount of rain that we received in that time. More work needs to be done, and I think you said it, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you there. You said this is not the silver bullet. I agree. That's why I think it's one of the tools that we could potentially use. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Troy Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. And Councilman Santiago, I agree with you. I don't think that 12 months ago or five years ago, this would have had much of an impact on our area, but what if it was 25 years ago or 40 years ago that this was implemented? I don't know how much of an impact it would have had, but I don't think it would have hurt if it had been done at that time. And, you know, my baby is 18 years old, and my hope is when he finishes his college degree, he comes back to Volusia County, and when he's, you know, 65 years old, he's not having to have this conversation. So I appreciate your comments, and I agree that it wouldn't have had an impact if it had been implemented a short time ago. Council, just because none of you have ever been to my home, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about Troy Kent and family. So we have square-foot gardens in our backyard, just so you all are aware, and we grow some pretty, you know, my wife laughs because I call them banter crops, but potatoes do really well in Florida. Eggplant is amazing. From seed, it's about 10 months, so be patient. Pineapple does well, but it takes two years. Be patient. My turnips, collard, and mustard greens are amazing. Tomatoes, as long as it's not too hot. My bell peppers, jalapenos, and habaneros were spectacular this past season. I'm a huge geek about making sure communities aren't putting St. Augustine floor-tam grass in the middle of a highway like Granada Boulevard. I'm a huge advocate for things like ground cover, like Asiatic jasmine and perennial peanut, something that, once it's established, it needs very little water, it doesn't need any fertilizer. But if you want to get me fired up, let's talk about the hundreds of millions of gallons of water that's put in the middle of highways and then fertilized, and then that water goes into the intercoastal, into the Halifax River, and then out offshore when I'm taking my baby, 18-year-old son, again, out there to go fishing, to do some grocery shopping, as we call it. I tell you this background because I'm serious about it in my little way, in my backyard. I heard EnRAC talk a little bit about, you know, a hybrid approach. Heard some people talk about sending this back to EnRAC. Chairman, I didn't hear you say what option you liked out of the three options. Is there one that you liked? I didn't hear you mention one that you liked.
Yes, I would like to approve it as a mandatory system with no, very, very few incentives and to send it to staff. They can strip those out of it. To send it back to EnRAC, it just, I know one of the members said they would like to have it, but they have a full schedule coming up, the very next meeting, taking stormwater.
You can keep my time going, it's okay. I'm going to be done in that time, it's okay. Yeah, interesting, and I'll just tell you this, I have yet to have a resident, and, you know, they put us, you hear me say, these rented seats because we're here to make the decisions for them. Many residents have told me, that's your job, man. I don't want to hear about it, that's why I put you there, you know? And if you don't hear from me, it's because I like what you're doing. When you hear from me, I'm upset with something, and that's when you hear from me. But I've never had a resident tell me that they don't like the sound of low-impact development, unless that's their business and they're in the business of development. But I've never had a resident say that. In fact, I had a constituent I met when I ran for the seat the first time about three years ago who moved into Margaritaville, beautiful area, by the way, but was complaining about the traffic. And I'm just going to throw out a number here, but I would say 90% plus of residents in Margaritaville are not from Volusia County. They are from the Northeast. So when I said to her, you know, do you think you're part of the problem because you moved down here and you're putting a strain on all the services here? She said, yes. And I said, so let me just get this right. You're allowed to come down, but after you, nobody else? And I loved her honesty. She said, yes, that's exactly right. I'm allowed to come down, but after me, nobody else. And that's really, I think, how a lot of people are. So I'm anxious to hear from my colleagues, chairman, to hear what they think. On the three options that we're looking at, I'm, I think-- On the three options that we're looking at, I'm, I think I'm a little more comfortable with the option, option three, the hybrid, but we'll see. Thanks.
Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. I, I think that great, all, all great ideas. I heard some things today that, that are interesting. I heard that some of these LID practices, we can, we can take back and incorporate in existing subdivisions existing. So, so I think one of the things we need to do is most of us here are less government people, and we're about to look at imposing some more restrictions on our free government. But now we have an opportunity here to provide some tools to people that already live here to make our life better ourselves, some, some self-responsibility. Instead of coming up to the podium, instead of sitting here and complaining, we can go home and take some action. But we have to educate and inform people like me on what action we can take. And oh, by the way, we need to go out to the HOA associations of the world and let them know that I need to do what you're asking me to do without getting a ticket for doing it in my HOA. So I think it's very important that we educate the people that are already here, the people in Margaritaville, Troy. Tell them, yeah, I'm part of the problem, but we have a bus, so I'll start taking the bus downtown so I don't have to drive, things of that nature. I think that's very, very important. And for those people without, I, we always talk about Daytona Park Estates, but people like that, that don't have an HOA, but they have a heck of a community, community there, what can they do? Instead of what can you do for me? I believe we heard from, we didn't hear from Jessica, but we heard from Mike Woods, and, and they represent Cobb Coal. I think 90% of the land development is probably spoken to by three lawyers, local lawyers here. 90% of it. Cobb Coal, Glenn Storch, and you name the other. I've worked with three or four firms since I've been here in 2015. And when we meet on the one-on-ones, the first thing they do is say, we've talked to the local residents and the neighbors, and they want a bigger fence, they want a higher burn, they want a little bit of this, they want a bigger buffer, and we're willing to do that. So why can't we add to that in those one-on-one conversations on a voluntary basis? Mike, Jessica? We, we'd like a little LID in there. Would you do that for us? Yeah, yeah, our, our guys willing to do that. Our guys willing, our, our gal's willing to do that. I think if we, if we push it onto the, the developers as, as a strong look, if you do this, we might not have to make it mandatory. Give us a nugget or two. Give us a nugget or three. I think, I think that could, could work. And you know, the chairman also talked about the, the LID conferences that my yearly visit with Samantha. There are restrictions coming down, right? St. John's just updated their chapter, was it chapter one and chapter two? Increasing water quality, I would say. But the one thing I learned at, at those things, both years, are there's some tremendous tools out there that we can use to show you what the outcome is of, of LID. And, and I think it's utterly important that, that we, I, I don't want to say educate, because then people say, I called our citizens stupid. No. Inform our citizens what LID is. Low-impact development, to the person I talked to yesterday, is low-impact to me, not low-impact as the book states. So when we talk about LID, we need to explain to them what LID means. It means taller buildings with less of a footprint. It means clustering. What you see are a lot of homes stacked on top of each other. What we all see is a lot of conservation land not being, not being developed. So I think those are all keys, and I believe that, that we can drive this at the volunteer level, knowing that if it doesn't work, we can make it mandatory later. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilman Dempsey.
Yes, I'd like to compliment INRAC for what they did. This is a wonderful package you guys put together. And I think like everybody else, I think we all appreciate basically what you're trying to accomplish. But I'm a big proponent of option one. I don't like mandates. The one thing I remember, I wasn't around for the Great Depression like maybe Jake was, but I remember in the seventies when, you know, from 76 to 80, this country had the gas lines, double-digit inflation, double di- double-digit interest rates. And then I remember President Reagan, they did the tax, the Kemp-Roth Tax Reform Act of 81. And I concentrated in tax in law school, and I even attended Florida Masters of Tax Law Program. And I just remember that it was through tax incentives, not mandates, incentives. You want to get construction, or you want to get the automotive industry back up, Caterpillar, you want to put them back up on their feet, John Deere? Do the, either accelerated depreciation for building or bonus depreciation? Give these people an incentive to do it. These developers are businessmen, just like all the business people who bought with those tax incentives back in the eighties. And look what President Trump's doing right now. President Trump is not mandating that these countries conform. What's he doing? He's going to tariff them. Those are incentives. John Deere, you want to go and move your factory out of the country? All right, we're going to hit you with a huge tariff. He's not saying you can't go, but he's giving them an incentive not to go. And so I like the idea of incentives. I don't know what was in place for conservation subdivisions. I mean, it was obviously maybe a good idea, but I don't hear anything about incentives. This thing is chock full of incentives, which I think is great. I think we need to let it play out with these developers, see if they bite on it. We all want to see low-impact development, you know, test it out and try to see if it works. But to mandate, all we may do with mandates is drive developers out of the country, or out of, well, country, out of the county. They may just pack up and say, heck with this, we're going to go to Lake County and do a subdivision, or we'll go, you know? So we don't want to scare them off, but I do want to incentivize their ideas with INRAC, because I think they are wonderful ideas, so. And again, I know I talked about it before, but I'm really going to be pushing for this to come up for a vote, maybe as a referendum agenda, that if we could get the taxpayers of the county to vote on whether they want to put more money into this flooding issue. I know Mr. Reckon Wald has said, you know, a lot of this money is tied with strings. I think Ms. Pante actually pointed out that a lot of the money that's available for flooding is, has strings attached. It has to go to low-income neighborhoods and stuff. Okay, well, let's put it on a referendum. Let the voters decide. Hey, would you like to add to your millage a little bit to see if we could come up with a pool of money with no strings attached? So we could incentivize even more for INRAC development, more for structured, strategic acquisitions of repeatedly flooded property, or even Miller Road. I understand that the county did a lot to buy out these houses, but there's still a problem down there, and I appreciate the fact that we use that money to buy out these properties. It's great. But again, apparently it has to touch the house. But it would be nice if the roads didn't flood, whether they touch the house or not. So if we come up with a tax base and a pool of money that we could fix that problem, I think that'd be great. But in the interim, I love option one. I love the incentive package that goes with it, so that's what I'm supporting. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. A couple of things to, to deal with. Once we've heard, let's, let's try this and see if it works. We don't have to try it to see if it works. It, it works. It has a proven track record. Babcock Ranch in Fort Pierce, Florida, 18,000 acres, 20,000 homes, did go through a 500-year storm event, and no homes flooded, no streets flooded, nothing flooded. Because low-impact development is a stormwater management system that doesn't pile up water in, if you go to LID conferences, you'll hear burp, a big ugly retention pond. It stretches the water out so that it can be transpired by the vegetation, so it can percolate through the soil. There's, I'm really sorry to hear that there's still debate on, does this even work? Yeah, it, it works. And had we done it five years ago, I, I love you staff, but I'm sorry, your answer shocked me. If it was done five years ago, would it prevented any flooding? Basically, you said probably not, maybe in some cases. I don't think there's any doubt about it, that it would help, would have helped to prevent flooding, because it, one of the biggest, largest causes of flooding in Volusia County are the big ugly retention ponds that where water leaks through the sides, where the spillway systems purposely dump water into the neighboring properties. LID, low-impact development would prevent that. There are no big ugly retention ponds. So I hope, I'm asking this council, please, we, we promised the public that we would take bold action, that we would do something to prevent flooding in the future. It's option one just says, yeah, we'll, you know, we'll, we're recommending LID. Well, we've, we've recommended it for four years that I've been here. The comp plan has always said, we recommend this, but it's, it's optional. Nobody does it. I've also talked to developers that have said, just tell us what to do, and we will do it. We just have to know what we want to, the, a mandatory system is a hybrid, because they still pick what works for that property, the size of it, and what they're building. The incentives are incredible. Number one, I'm going to repeat it again. It, it reduces the destructions of, of homes that are being flooded. The incentive is we reduce the amount of pollution going to the Indian River Lagoon and the, and the Tamoka River and the St. John's River. The incentive is that our outstanding waterways that are also impaired waterways are better protected. The incentive is that Volusia County takes the lead. We're an early adopter into doing something that makes our county a more beautiful place to live with more beautiful developments. I don't know if any of you remember, it was maybe two years ago, Dr. Pierce Jones came from the University of Florida, and he said, he's worked on this. He's, he's developed developments that are using this. He said, it's actually cheaper to develop, and it provides a, an end product that is more valuable. And it provides a, a living environment that is more valuable for the people that live there. So the result is a better Volusia County with a higher standard of, or a higher quality of life. It would also draw outside businesses who want to be part of a community that does everything in its power to protect the citizens from flooding, from polluted water, and to, to make it more beautiful. Low-impact development, the incentive is that it's the right thing to do. And I don't know what could be more powerful than that. So I'm for option three. If we, if we have to send it back to, to INRAC to deal with some of the the incentives, that's fine, but I, I am not for incentivizing, you don't have to pay building permits or this permit when everybody else in Volusia County does. And I'm not for increasing floor space or density. I'll be glad to talk about things that will really work to make it feasible for them. Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. When I heard the comment made about whether or not 10 years ago, 20 years ago, this had prevented it, when you have significant rain events, I think Mr. Bartlett said it best, that our current stormwater capacity could accommodate 11 inches of rain, I think it was said, and we have an 18-inch, 20-inch rain event, nothing's going to prevent, nothing. However, that being said, I think that we can do things to help. And I also like option three. INRAC did an incredible job, incredible job working on this. Again, I think maybe what I said before about it, it may have helped but not prevented, but I'm interested to see, I, I, Don, I appreciate what you said, but I also, listen, I, I'm kind of curious what the rest of my colleagues say, but I, I do like the hybrid approach, but I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Johansson. Is this you, or is it David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jake. You know, I started my commentary with option three, but listening to some of my colleagues, you know, I've kind of been swayed to the point that, you know, I'm, I'm kind of mixed in between some of these, these things. Again, as I, my opening comment, I'd said that I believe some of these features are beneficial. I don't know of all of them. I haven't been convinced of all of them. I'm not convinced that it would have saved people's homes that, that have flooded. I don't think there's been any expert testimony or, or information provided to me to say that would have done that. So I, I wish I could have heard that expert testimony and, and then maybe come to that conclusion. The other part is, I think it's important for the public to know that LID standards allow for ponds still. So the big ugly pond, as it was described, will still has the potential to be there on the LID. If you read it, I think staff can clear that, clarify that for you, Mr. Chair. If you read the options in there, it allows for large ponds also, along with some of these other mitigating factors. So I just want to, I don't want the public to leave with what I think is misinformation. That being said, my colleagues that have made the comment of forcing it to mandatory, I'm not ready to go to that full-blown position yet. Which puts me in a difficult spot, because I, I don't know which way I want to vote yet. I, I prefer to, to maybe even have more discussion on it. But if I had to vote today, might go revert to option one now, because of the concern of what would be mandatory. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Robbins. Thank you, Chair. Counsel, the, the problem that I hear in the last few months from residents is that the older homes and developments are the ones receiving the, the brunt of our, our excess of water. I know we've done a number of things at the county here to, to address that stuff, and I, I still don't think we do a great job projecting some of those, projecting what we do out there. And I had asked a few minutes ago, the county manager, if you had a, a list of certain things that, that we had. County manager, were you able to, to find any objectives that we have completed thus far and what we have planned here in the future that are hard-hitting policy improvements?
Well, what we sent out, I think on the memo, and I'll, part of the attach was also the work done, and if not, I'll send it back out. You know, as, as part of our canal maintenance, heat and control canal project program. And I can say, you know, last year, we actually increased the amount from $690,000 to $800,000 in maintenance towards the channels. I think you had asked, or someone had asked in previous meetings, because of some statement that was said from the public about what we do. I can tell you, we, we do a pretty extensive asset management and public work. So they, they are very, very good and very advanced in how they track what they do. And I think there's over 1,200 activities that show tasks performed on canals over the last three years. And that represents over $2.23 million in work. So as far as naming all the canals, we'd be here all night, because we have thousands of miles of stuff out there, when you count both sides of the, of the road and the canals themselves. I will also say, when we talk about what we do for inspection, the American Society of Civil Engineers, they actually publish recommendations for stormwater inspections and frequencies. The inspection frequencies vary by system, but the publication suggests a spot check every three years and a full inspection every six years for ditches and waterways. And our annual work plan for Volusia County Maintaining Canals calls for a frequency of inspection. And our annual work plan for Volusia County Maintain Canals calls for a frequency of inspecting the canals three times per year. So, not, not once every three years, three times per year. So, that's nine times, uh, the frequency that's actually recommended by the American Society of Civil Engineers. So, uh, we talk about, um, you know, we have plans, we've already met with the United, the USDA and NRC Emergency Watership Program. We've put in, uh, projects for Groover Branch, Spruce Creek, and Lake Ashby Canal. None of those are actually county-maintained waterways, they're natural streams, uh, or, or not maintained by the county. Uh, so, we'll see, hopefully, uh, that they used to be, uh, maintained by the Florida Wildlife, uh, FWC, but they are no longer in some cases, so we'll see if we can get some money to do that, that'll be extra.
George, can you, let me interrupt you just for one second. We're in debate, we've gone back to questions, um,
Sure.
How, how, are you gonna relate this to the topic that we're actually talking about?
Abs- absolutely, absolutely, Chair, cuz, cuz he had mentioned that, that we're not, uh, doing or taking any bold action. So, I have to, uh, I have to incorporate what we are doing and what this county council has done to, uh, to my statement, please. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
Well, I'll just finish with, you know, uh, you know, the projects that we, we talked about, the studies, the basis studies, will, they will generate work in all the ca- all the basins, really in the county. And remember, the largest amount of flooding actually occurred on the east side of the county. That's where you put over a thousand homes, uh, where, with water in the homes, uh, not yards or things of that nature. The, actually, water in the homes. And, and of course, a lot of that work over there, uh, will be, uh, incorporated in these studies, and probably some very big projects. I mean, you're talking, uh, uh, you know, canal, uh, lock systems and things of that nature, and, and large pumps over on that side of the county, and probably large home buyouts. So, uh, but that's where the, the vast majority of the flooding and the two storms, uh, took place. So, just a lot more to come, millions of dollars, uh, probably will be spent on those projects coming forward.
Thank, thank you, county manager. And, and just to add on to what Don said as well, uh, you know, more regulations equals more bureaucracy, equals, uh, less affordability and more subsidies to create affordable housing. The same exact, uh, housing we're trying to reduce that we just voted on. And, and, and seven out of seven of us ran on less government, to the point where, um, we had given direction to the county manager and our, um, goal settings coordinator, which we pay a lot of money to, to find ways to cut red tape bureaucracy, to create a, a scenario that's easier for our citizenry, uh, to live here and to operate a business here, in, in, in making, um, government larger by adopting, uh, mandatory regulations that still, no one has been able to provide no measurable data to say that it will stop or prevent flooding to the people that we hear about. So, so that's the, the, the kinda pick-along, and, and, and the bold action that we took, and, and I think Don and I started it, Mr. Kent, uh, Kent helped out, um, I, one or two votes after, when we allocated an additional fifty million dollars towards stormwater, putting us over that hundred-twenty million dollar threshold. That's bold action to get real projects that we have identified to solve our real issues. And what I don't wanna do is, 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 is just do things cuz they feel good, um, that, that don't have any measurable data. So, I'm not for more regulations, I hold my stance on that, I'm a supporter of option one. Uh, thank you.
Councilman Johansson.
Thank you, sir. Um, everybody said that the LID at Babcock Ranch worked, and, and there's a lot of things there. But if, but if you, and, and we mentioned about the big ugly pond, but if you look at the satellite, there's no less than thirty ponds, including a big ugly one in the middle. Uh, oh, it might not be ugly, but, but, uh, um, it appears ugly from the satellite. Um, and, and I don't know whether, what they did caused the neighbors to flood, but there aren't too many neighbors yet. So, we're, we're not sure. Um, across the street, there's a big ugly retention pond about the third of the size of Babcock Ranch. So, I, I don't wanna hang my hat on Babcock Ranch, even though it looks like a nice project. We have plenty of subdivisions here in Volusia County that didn't flood during Ian, uh, during Matthew, during Irene, during Milton. Um, so, and, and, and they're not the great resilient communities anymore than anybody else is. Um, you know, the things that Babcock Ranch has, a, a bunch of our subdivisions, um, uh, in and around Volusia County have them as well. Um, so, um, I'm, I don't wanna hang my hat on that, like, we gotta, we gotta do it like that, because they did it. It's, it's a great project, we can move forward and do it. Um, so, I, I, sticking with the, the Don Dempsey laissez-faire, let's not crunch people with, uh, uh, with more regulation. Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve option one, as recommended by Em- EnRAC with no changes.
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve option one. Motion is by, uh, Jake Johansson. And the second is by, uh, Danny Robbins.
And just to clarify, Mr. Chair, if I could, that you have two items, so I, I would take from that motion, that says the item two, and you're, that is to approve the order.
Twenty twenty-five oh two. Okay, Jake, were you done? Okay, uh, Troy Kent.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Dempsey, I, I'm, I'm with you when you talk about, um, you know, less government in my life and telling me what to do. I was just sitting here thinking about, so, you know, government already tells us what to do, so much. But I was thinking about a couple of things, you know, um, I, I live in Orme Beach, and, uh, not too far from my house, we have a fire hydrant out front. But if, if I lived in rural Volusia County, and there was no fire hydrant, they've got regulations and rules here that if I wanted to build my house, I have to have sprinkler system put in my house. Government's telling me, you have to do this. Um, it's a huge cost to me if I was doing that. You know, when I was a little kid, um, and I won't poke on anybody's age, but when I was a little kid, why, why are they looking at Jake? I didn't even look at Jake, I didn't even, Jake, I wasn't even looking at you. But, w- we stood up and jumped in the front seat while my mother drove a station wagon down the road. I mean, there was, there was no seatbelt law or rule whatsoever. And now, we've got government telling us, you put your seatbelt on every time, click it or tick it. So, I just put that out there as sometimes government gets in your life because they say they wanna protect you. And, uh, I'm not saying that this is a, a, you know, a thing to, to protect people, and that's not where I'm going with this. Um, but, when we've been nineteen years with conservation subdivisions, and we have one on the books right now, it's not even, oh, wait, it's coming up to tell me something different.
Correction, uh, conservation subs were approved in two thousand fifteen, cluster subs, which is another, um, type of subdivision. That was two thousand eight, so.
Thank you. So, so nine years ago, and in, in nine years, we, we have one not complete on the books. Um, and if, if, uh, option one doesn't get passed, then, uh, I'll make an, I'll make a motion for option three. Thank you.
Councilman Reinhardt.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dempsey. I've heard Councilman Kent tell you, there you go, you did it again, you changed my mind. And I've never followed that, so, until now, and then when I heard, uh, the things that we've accomplished from the, from the county manager, thank you for asking those questions, but, and I do see the purpose of that, in order to get that answered, so I appreciate that. So, it is true, we all ran on lesser government, we all preach lo- lesser government. And I think that, right there, falls within that line. A- as much as I got excited about certain things, but I think that what we're doing, uh, to head in that direction i- is in the right direction. So, I, I'm, you changed my mind, so, thank you.
Councilman Dempsey.
I gotta get Troy, though. No, I was just, it's, it's the incentive part of this that I love. Um, it, it's, there's, I don't know of any incentives in these prior ordinances, or whatever they were. But, obviously, with no incentives, you know, you're gonna buy an Allis Chalmers tractor or a John Deere tractor, they're both thirty thousand dollars. But wait a minute now, John Deere moves to Mexico, now that tractor, the same type of tractor is gonna cost you a hundred thousand versus the Allis Chalmers, it's thirty thousand, which one are you gonna buy? It's the incentive to buy the Allis Chalmers that's gonna drive John Deere out of business potentially, because of the tariff incentive that President Trump may impose on them. So, it's the incentive part that controls people's behavior. We're not telling you, you have to buy an Allis Chalmers. But if you wanna pay a hundred thousand for a John Deere tractor, or thirty for an Allis Chalmers made in, in America versus a John Deere made in Mexico, that incentive of no tariff on the Allis Chalmers is, is what I'm talking about. It's, it's the incentives, the free will that we are offering these developers, they're business people. You know, and again, I saw the Kemp-Roth Tax Reform Act eighty-one work, it pulled us out of, I don't know if you remember, the, the double, the, the misery that we were in for four years. Jake, remember, yes. But, within a year or two, that tax code, all, just incentives, that's what changed the economy, cuz people felt confident, they had incentives to buy American and to do certain things, and that's what revived the economy. I'm hoping that these incentives drives developers to at least try it, and then we'll see from there. Thanks.
Okay, I don't see anybody else, uh, to speak on this item. Um, uh, I've spoken twice, it'll take fifteen seconds bef- while I call, uh, ask you to, um, to call the roll. Just wanna say, this is, I, I, I believe in reducing the size of government, this doesn't increase it. This isn't stacking one regulation on top of the myriad that we have, it replaces them with something that would be better. Carissa, would you please call the roll? The motion is for option, uh, one, a, um...
Approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three, and resolution twenty twenty-five XX is recommended by the EnRAC with no changes. I believe that's...
The resolution will be...
All-inclusive, yes, Mike?
Yeah, my understanding, we, we just need a separate vote, so my understanding is you're doing two, two thousand twenty-five oh two.
That's correct.
Got it.
We're dealing only with item two.
Mr. Kent.
Y'all know what option I wanted, but I'm gonna surprise you, yes.
Mr. Reinhardt.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Mr. Santiago.
Yes.
Mr. Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Johansson.
Yes.
Mr. Brower.
No. Motion carries six to one. And so, that brings us to item three, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three and res, uh, and its resolution, creating a voluntary low-impact development and green store, uh, stormwater infrastructure program.
I approve.
A second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three.
Who was the motion by?
David.
Uh, David Santiago makes a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh three. The second was by Jake Johansson. Questions? Debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And, uh, any opposed, aye, the motion carries six to one. And that is the end of our items for tonight.
Uh, motion, motion to approve the resolution, sir, twenty twenty-five XX as recommended.
Pardon me?
Uh, I'm getting word that we need to approve the resolution as well.
Okay. Motion to approve the r- resolution, and the motion is made by Jake Johansson.
Second.
Second by Matt Reinhardt. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, aye, motion carries six to one. And with that, our business is done, and at eight fifty, this meeting is adjourned.
It's longer than I thought, you too, pal. Yes, I forgot to...
Not bad.